Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
For all those who can, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, founded under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we can say the pledge never sounded that good. We have no awards and proclamations today. Well, I guess we should proclaim that we had a very nice, enjoyable River Festival this year. And want to thank all those volunteers and people who worked hard to pull that off. It makes Salina look at its best. Citizens forum, this is a part of the meeting where anyone can come to the podium and discuss an issue that's not on the agenda. We'd ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. There's no age limit. Or required. Just give your name to the clerk, please.
Byron Tomlinz. Thanks for your time today, Commissioners. We wanted to revisit a proposal that we had brought to you earlier. As you remember, I represent a group that we just called Salina Athletic Partners, which represent USD 305, Kansas Wesleyan, Sacred Heart, Visit Salina, Salina Baseball Enterprises, and our baseball and softball community behind me. We represent all these people today in, again, reminding you the proposal that we had presented earlier about an $8 million project on which we would supply $4 million, and we're asking the city to fund $4 million. We come before you today to request an answer to our proposal. It would really help benefit this project, we feel. And we would like to ask that you consider a vote within two weeks on this. This is very important timeline, and I would like to just reiterate some of the finer points. I would go back through the whole project if you wish me to, but rather than do that, since we have presented, I just wanted to, in timeframe, reiterate some of the finer points of the project that we wanted to just revisit. We are moving forward right now with the patio project that we were designing to build into Dean Evans Stadium, which entailed a patio seating and a new backstop and tie in with the drainage. And with our architecture and engineering design, we need to meet with the city because, as you remember, we had a drainage issue that the city was working on for Dean Evans. And so we feel it vital before our project starts that we get with you and coordinate the drainage from the city's standpoint and our patio project from which Salina Baseball Enterprises is paying for in its entirety. And we want to coordinate those two projects to make sure they work together because that's the starting point of this project if we get started. And so we wanted to just reemphasize that we need to meet and get that going right away. The second point is we wanted to let you know and just reiterate that all our partners of the Salina Athletic Partners, the school users, we're all in. And I stand before you today that some of our fundraising is already going on. I'm almost halfway there, and I haven't even started. And so don't worry about our funding. We'll get it. And I wanted to give that commitment to you. Number three, we have some grants that we have applied for through Major League Baseball, and we have been talking with the Dane Hansen Foundation. And it's very important on our grants that our timeline needs to go right now. And that's why we're requesting strongly this two-week consideration of a vote and a decision because these grants are tied into getting started this year. And if our timeline is not met, we'll lose these grants, without a doubt. And so that's our other point. And then I just wanted to remind the two talking points that was in our PowerPoint presentation earlier that are very important to our group. And that is, number one, we asked for the right to name the one new premier baseball stadium, the two new premier softball stadiums, and the East Crawford recreational complex. We asked to follow the city's procedures in naming those in efforts for our fundraising and our supporters. That was number one. And number two, we asked to establish a maintenance committee from members of the city and members of our group that going forward would sit on this committee and make sure that we develop policy on user fees, tournament fees, and funds to set aside in a separate account so we can maintain through each year the top-quality nature of the stadiums, and we can have replacement costs already funded 10 to 15 years down the road. We feel those are vital, and we can't do our project without these two points. So I just wanted, that is in our PowerPoint. It was in our presentation, but we just wanted to reemphasize these important points going forward. So those are the things, without going through, you know, everything, that we really just wanted to reemphasize today. We've been here a year and a half. We respect the seats you sit in and the problems of budgetary. I think you've seen us at your budget meetings. We understand. We really do. But with challenge comes opportunity. And I stand before you today saying, I know we can succeed on this project, and we are in 100%. And I know whatever hurdle is there, we're ready to jump over it, and we want to be part of the solution. So we would really appreciate your consideration on passing of our request. So, you know, we have some issues on tournaments canceling and our facility starting to erode, and the 4A baseball and softball tournaments. We're a little worried about those, maintaining those in Salina. And with the money that we invested in the master plan, we feel like we should really try to follow those goals. And we feel the baseball and softball goals are not going right now towards the master plan. And we think our situation is the solution for that. So again, we're here to be part of the solution. We ask for your vote, and I thank you for your time. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Well, I have one, and since this is a little unusual agreement, and I guess if you get five seconds for each protege you brought with you, we give you a few extra minutes here. If the program, if everything was ideal and you had $8 million in your hand, what's the timeline on having the whole project finished?
February of 2021.
That's pretty quick.
Yeah, we, you may know, we're discussing the project in our study session, and we appreciate you coming to this meeting and that study session because wouldn't that have fit? We have some discussion that we're going to continue next Monday. What I would suggest to make our time next Monday most efficient would be if you and Mr. Skreg can meet. He certainly has a list of our concerns and our comments from just a few minutes ago. And that way, if there's anything that needs to be brought up that we can start thinking about ahead of time, we can use the next seven days to our best advantage. And to further that process, I'd ask the other four Commissioners if there are any comments or questions that you'd want to throw out now just to make our time next week more efficient.
I think I'll wait until we probably hear from a few others.
Yeah, I think we should discuss it a little more amongst ourselves as well. I would like to hear the preliminary conversations you have with Mr. Shrag, and then I think, I would like to think we can make that two-week late deadline.
Because I think we had some, we had some specific questions that we did ask Mr. Skreg in the study session, and I think they're pretty straightforward. And, you know, you mentioned the other entities that you're partnering with, and, you know, that's great. That's something we really like to see. And something that just occurs to me now is, you know, if you have letters of commitment from those entities, so, you know, we're sure of their participation as well. I think that's something that I know would be very reassuring to me as a Commissioner, making decisions about our portion of the project.
We can meet with him, and we can get those things to you. I do appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to come to the podium?
Tyler Hinnick. I'm the current president of Salina Baseball Enterprises. A couple of notes, some that we've mentioned in previous meetings, that we've been contacted by the American Legion National Office with the potential to host a regional here, which is a three-year commitment, which brings in annually $500,000 to $1 million every year to a community that hosts this tournament, bringing in teams from throughout the Midwest. We've already been contacted by the state offices to host zone and triple and single A state tournaments for the future if this project goes through. I've been contacted by a lot of people that stand behind me who are tournament directors, no matter what the age, that are losing teams to their tournaments because those teams are going elsewhere to play on turf where they know it's guaranteed. These teams are not dropping out right away, but as soon as they see a forecast with a cloud, they head or hit the road and run to wherever they can find turf and leave Salina in the dust. Communities such as Manhattan are calling our tournament directors, offering deals to move our tournaments, which we started and run here in Salina, to their facilities. Sunflower, Slunflower Summer Collegiate Teams, which our Salina Shock play for, have already been contacted by Derby and Cheney and been asked to move our home games to their facilities because they're afraid of what our facilities can do to their players and their safety. We just received word this last week from construction companies and members of McPherson and Newton that McPherson is planning on turfing two of their fields this fall at Grant Sports Complex, and will do so to two more in the fall of 2020. I was also contacted by umpires from our area to let me know that they are starting to go elsewhere because when they are scheduled to call games here in Salina, it is not reliable due to their conditions. If we get a little bit of rain, our games are canceled. This is taking money out of their pockets and how they supply a lifestyle for their families. Kansas Wesleyan played home games in Oklahoma and other communities this season due to the conditions of our facilities. Last week, our Salina Falcons were almost rained out due to a little bit of rain overnight, which turned into a 75-degree sunny day the next day. Within 30 minutes, I was contacted by the head baseball coach and the athletic director of McPherson College and Bethany College offering their facilities for the same fee that we pay to participate here in Salina, and they said they'd have their fields ready within two hours. Due to the conditions that our fields were in this last spring with the 4A state baseball tournament, I was also reached out to by members of the Bueller community, Nickerson, and others, letting us know that they've begun a petition to have the KESHA 4A state baseball and softball tournaments moved elsewhere until Salina is able to commit to fixing up our facilities and providing a turf surface for them to play on. The families of these communities were mad because they've had to change their work schedule, day in and day out, in order to see their kids play. They were unable to do so, and then were forced to miss important games that would provide very important memories for them down the road. I'm a firm believer that as a man and then as a community that our decisions affect those around them and not just ourselves. Now, the surrounding communities are abandoning the idea of coming to Salina to play, which makes, takes money out of the people of Salina's pockets that they've worked hard for. It has been stated multiple times by citizens of surrounding towns and our own here in Salina that it's recognized above most for our baseball and softball tradition and facilities. They look to us to lead them and to set the bar high. That record of setting the bar high now is in question, and rightfully so with our field's conditions. I was born and raised here in Salina. My family calls it home. The same goes for many who are here today behind me and others who have moved here to call it their home. It is now our responsibility to do our part to make Salina be its best Salina, and we as a community ask for your vote. The Salina baseball and softball family has a strong, successful past that's built a rich tradition, and now we need your vote to help us have a successful future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Bill Neal, head baseball coach at Kansas Wesleyan. Mine won't take very long. I just kind of want to reiterate a couple more points and kind of, I'm going to kind of tell you a little bit about the, I guess, the money side of it. So we played, we played five home dates at McPherson, 30 minutes down the road. These were all scheduled home dates between softball and baseball that were played down the road. Softball, played Benedictine at McPherson. Baseball, we played Dakota State in Topeka. We spent $1,000 for four games. We played McPherson at McPherson, which was a home game. We played St. Mary's at McPherson, home game. We played Tabor. We played two games. We spent $1,000 to play at Wichita State. And we played a home game in Northwestern Oklahoma State. Paid $350. And we had three home games canceled. So I've had multiple coaches in the KCAC say that we would host, or they would push to host the KCAC tournament here if we did upgrade some of our things. So to go on that, we spend, baseball teams, we spend an average of about $300 a meal, and then we spend about an average of $1,000 a night for hotels. So that's all money that would kind of come back here, not to mention fuel and stuff like that. So my JV team spent five weeks without even playing. And a lot of these games too, so some people say, well, if you couldn't play here, you know, could you play because of the weather? Yeah, it was fine. I mean, we went 30 minutes down the road to McPherson, and just the facility itself was unplayable. So I just kind of wanted to reiterate some of those points about the money and I think what we could bring here. And, oh, the other point is too, like, we're doing schedules right now. And, you know, Graceland University and Iowa sent me an email about meeting up in Kansas City. They would be the host team. They would pay all the rental fees for a two- or three-day deal and get four teams there to play. That would be something that would be open to us, you know, in February, which is a month you can play here, you know. McPherson plays at home quite a bit in February. You know, it's not always ideal, but it's one of those where if we're not using the facility, if we're on the road, a team like Dome may call the city up and say, hey, can we rent Dean Evans for the weekend? We'll invite four, five other teams. We'll come here. We'll spend money on hotels. We'll spend money on food. Obviously, we'll pay ridiculous cost to rent fields. I mean, like I said, we had to play the game, so we had to go to Wichita. We had no choice. We'd go to Wichita State. They can pretty much name their price, and we paid it, you know. And then we ate meals there, had to spend a hotel in Oklahoma and stuff like that. So I'm saying this as I believe there's a big benefit to this. And that's just the baseball side of it. Obviously, there's softball as well and stuff like that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Coach.
I'm Ryan Colzer with the Salina Spikes Organization. And I wanted to back up some of Tyler's comments, but before I did that, I just had a conversation with Scott Taggart in the back. When our high school team was playing at Mays, Scott actually got to talking to the facilities director there, and he indicated that they had had their field between their baseball, softball, and soccer, their turf fields had been rented out every night of the spring. They made tens of thousands of dollars with it. I mean, he gave us a number, but we don't know if that was accurate or not. And they didn't charge the teams in their league. So they made that much money just renting their facility to other area teams, which, again, like Coach Neal said, we'd have the same opportunity to do that here. We host the Leonard Seer Memorial Tournament. Last year, we had 78 teams in that tournament. This year, we had 60. We had two organizations that directly did not come. I mean, they had one or two teams, but instead of bringing one in every age group, they just brought a couple. When I reached out to them, they, just like Tyler said, they said, nope, we're going to Manhattan or Topeka or wherever we can find turf. They said, we can't take, we can't take a chance of having rain outs again. Sure enough, Sunday morning, we get rain. Rain was done by 6:45. We could have been playing by eight, but our entire tournament was canceled. I mean, on our Sunday portion of it. Our 14-year-old group, this, I felt like this was embarrassing to the city of Salina. Our four, and I don't know if it was all of them. I had just heard that a portion of those 14-year-old teams that were supposed to play here in Salina actually packed up, drove to Hays, and played out there on their turf. And I am one of the people that's been directly contacted by Manhattan. I feel like they know what's going on with this situation. They, and I feel like they're not actively recruiting our tournaments yet, but they're putting that bug in our ear. And I think as soon as this thing, if it does get voted down, I think you're going to see them really ramp up their efforts to get these tournaments there because they have the facilities, but they don't have the tradition and the directors. So I just wanted to back up some of Tyler's comments and indicate that about the Mays rental situation. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, Joan Ratsliff, Salina. And, you know, I come up here pretty often, and I'm fortunate that I am able to do that because at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, I'm not at work like a lot of people are. I am retired, but I do not enjoy it. I do not enjoy getting up here and being on camera and talking in front of people. It's just not my nature. But I think that it is so important that we use our First Amendment rights, that we use an opportunity to present information and opinions to our governing body that we elected. And so I do it because I think it's important that citizens be represented. It doesn't matter if they're low-income or where they live in the town, what color they are, whatever it might be. It is so important for everyone to exercise their right to free speech and for them to be respected in their doing so. So I wanted to follow up on the forum that was in 107B last week, the one that's held at 3:45 off-camera. And I want to thank Commissioner Hodges for bringing means to record that today because that has been, recording the study sessions has been a perpetual request of citizens, and no effort had been made to correct that, what I consider a failure on the part of the city commission and city staff. So I appreciate that. But I shared observations during that forum that it seemed to me that the commission was following staff when we need to have balance. You know, I know as well as anyone that micromanaging governing body is a really, really bad idea. But on the other hand, the city commission is tasked with leading, and I tried to express that opinion and to share some observations. It was not meant as any kind of attack. It was meant as constructive criticism. But I felt like the comments that I received came from a defensive posture, and that was disheartening to me because I didn't feel like I was being heard. And I feel like what I had to say was important. It was an observation. So I was told a couple of things that raised my level of concern. One was that I really didn't have anything to add since some commissioners get complete information from weekly meetings with the city manager. And another indicated a preference for staff to respond to citizens speaking to the commission. And I really think that, well, I was seeking a discussion, you know, of that. And instead, I felt like the ears were blocked. And I think that I had something worth saying. So I want to remind the commission that the purpose of public input to the commission is to offer perspectives and information you may not otherwise have. No commissioner's private weekly meetings with the city manager is a substitute for that and nor a guarantee that you know or that you're going to learn all you need to know. To rely only on what staff provides you denies the fact that you were elected ostensibly to represent the interests of all our citizens in your decision-making. And that is just one example of how this body has a long way to go before it is truly transparent and open to engaging its citizens. So in kind of a segue to that, I'd like to draw your attention to Section 8.2 of the ethics policy that was adopted in 2017. There is, Part 2 says, "Special Ethics Council." That is supposed to be a quote, "an available legal resource that is available to the city to assist in administration enforcement of that ethics policy." And I've had an interest in this for a couple of reasons, but I won't go into all that. So I have a question about that. Who is our special ethics council? Do we have one? Anybody know? I would think that if we had one, you would know who that is.
Not to my knowledge.
If we have an issue that our city attorney cannot properly handle, then we would get outside counsel.
Well, I would suggest that you have someone or a panel of people that would be appropriate for that rather than having to scramble and find someone.
Well, they're prescribed means by which those issues can be raised, unfortunately, relatively infrequently.
Yes. And I think that there are issues that keep going on and on and on because some of the ethics policies are really not being, they're not being put in place.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments on the podium? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking to the gentleman behind you. I'm sorry.
And I just want to say, please say yes to all the kids that play baseball and softball for the future.
Thank you very much.
Daniel Lekoff, 655 Highland. I appreciate everyone coming out and sharing their opinion on the government. That's pretty rare, as you all know. It's pretty empty seats usually. I hope most of them are also aware of the financial situation that the city is in. Pretty, I would consider it dire personally, having to go back and make cuts and also considering future tax increases. I'm aware some of you think we're under taxed, and I think that's unfortunate. But I hope you'll evaluate carefully how we handle it going forward and if there is a need to increase taxes, I just hope you get that out there. The main reason I wanted to come before you today, I've been made aware that there's a policy that city employees are not allowed to put political yard signs in their yards. I'm not sure if that's 100% correct, but I've been told that by multiple people. I have First Amendment concerns with that, limiting the speech of city employees in a nonpartisan election on their private time, private property. So I hope you will take a look at that and hopefully reconsider if that is a policy.
City attorney is not here, so I'll turn to the city management. I'm personally not aware of that, but...
I'm working from memory, but I think it is limited to city elections. And we have other policies that relate to an employee's ability to address things that directly relate to their job duties and their work function, including addressing...
that directly relate to their job duties and their work function, including addressing you as a city commission. So, our past advice has been, if it's unrelated to their job duties, speaking from the podium, they can address you. If it's directly related to their job duties, that creates a conflict. And, my recollection of the policy is that we have said that political signs for local city commission campaigns are not permissible. But, I'd have to go back and review the policy to be sure.
Yeah, we'll give you an update next week.
Yeah, I'd really like you to look into that and challenge that. Thank you.
Hello?
Could you give your name to the city clerk, please? Thank you.
My name's Cooper Taggart. I'm part of the Salina Spikes organization. I also am an employee, and, and, am an employee at Schlotzky's. I noticed that, I went there on the day of the Leonard Seer Tournament. I was working, I got hungry, I went there for lunch. Outside the door, we had people lined up, just outside. And I, if you drove around and looked at many other restaurants, places like that, you saw that as well. So, not only would players like me and the city would be, trying to think of the word, sorry, gaining, but also companies like, and restaurants like that would be as well. And also, if you, a couple weeks ago, we played at Mattson. And, along the outside of the field, it just looked like rocks of dirt were just dumped, like clumps, probably about that size. And it seems like the people who work the fields don't want to put the work in to make our fields look the best they could. With turf, I understand it takes work to do these, but it seems like if they don't want to put the work in to make the fields playable, then turf would allow them not to have to. And sadly, I had to say that, but it's very true. Also, JV baseball at Salina Central. There are multiple games that they played where they couldn't even get in the field because it was locked, 30 minutes to an hour before game time. Which I think is sad. It limits warm-up time for pitchers, players, everything. And it's truly an embarrassment for Salina baseball, and I think multiple people here would agree. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can consider our director of parks so notified, and he'll look into that. Thank you. Anyone else?
I got one thing, I got one thing I'd like to, I am, I'm overwhelmed, I'm impressed. I cannot believe the turnout for this. I've got multiple emails, multiple phone calls from a lot of you folks out there. And if numbers speak, I mean, with this here, then my feeling is, we can't miss the boat on this, we need to do something about it. So, thank every one of you guys for coming.
I also would like to make a couple of comments here. As I look at baseball in Salina and also softball, I know we've, over the years, been a very strong community. And again, we're looking at two different types of venues. We're looking at the venues that are on East Crawford that help the Legion teams and the colleges. But, we're also looking at what we can do to Bill Burke to make it a better facility. Give away my age a little bit, but a little over 20 years ago, I was coaching at those facilities. And as I go around to those now, I'm embarrassed by the quality of the facilities when I look at Dean Evans, the bathrooms at Bill Burke, and the concession stands, the things that we have not taken care of as a community, that we should have been doing years ago. I look out here, and I, we talk about economic development, and we talk about keeping young families here, except for a few guys over here, that most everybody I'm looking at is fairly young. And if we as a community, the guy back there with no hair, he knows who I'm looking at. A majority of us want to keep those young families in our community. And I'm going to ask a question of some of these young people. How many of you have been in the fieldhouse to practice or to play sports so far? Raise your hand high. That's the type of thing we need if we are going to keep our community strong. That is not only the fieldhouse, but that is our baseball fields. And we, as a commission, need to step up, and we need to be proactive. Actually, we're really reactive right now, because we've let things deteriorate. So, I am a strong believer that we can fund the city's portion through transient guest tax. We're currently at 6.7%. If we raise that to 8%, I believe we can fund a majority of our portion of the money that's being asked for, if we amortize that over 15 years. That does not take a penny out of the taxpayers' pocket here locally. That are, that's individuals coming into our community to spend money, and I believe that's how we should fund it.
Kelly Kitchener, with the Salina Kings organization. We have five teams. Just to kind of put it in perspective, money-wise, our group raised just a little under $5,000 per team this year to compete in baseball. Part of that cost is because of our travel. We have to go outside of Salina to play. We played in Salina twice this year. One of the tournaments, as Ryan mentioned, got cut short by a day. So, it's a big commitment by our parents, us as coaches, and by these little guys right here. They put a lot of time in because they love to do it with their friends, against their friends. And so, it goes deeper than, than just youth sports. It's, it's building a lot for these guys, and for us, to be able to, you know, do it with them. So, when you, when you think about voting for this, it's not, you know, we haven't managed our facilities well, we haven't taken care of our facilities well for years. We can change that right now. We can start and make it better, and continue to grow. Without starting, we're never going to get a chance. If we keep declining, it's just not going to be here anymore. It's just not going to happen. I can tell you firsthand because I participate in it. So, if we don't make a decision and get started, we're going to be behind, and we're never going to catch up.
Those that know me know, I'm always looking for an opportunity to speak. I'm Darren Pittinger. I don't have any affiliation with the baseball program anymore, those days are kind of over. I do have a son that plays Legion. But, I think one thing that maybe isn't being considered or thought of, by not doing this, we opened the door to have 4A baseball and softball moved. If I'm in that community that takes it, I'm now going to who needs to be to say, hey, look, we already have baseball and softball, we have the venue, give us volleyball, give us wrestling, give us basketball, and we lose all that impact from financial gain in our community, because all that's gone as well too. And you guys know as well as I do, if we lose something, to try to get it back is extremely difficult. Especially if it's a community that puts on really nice tournaments, they takes care of the people that come in and travel. So, if things are going really well there, and then we decide down the road to get turf somehow, and try to get that back, guys, it's, it's not happening. And by that point, we've already missed the boat.
Yeah, I'm Darren Laws, part of the Spikes organization. It's plain and simple, if you build it, they will come.
Norman Mantle, Salina. I like this young man's speech over here. It's about taxes. Where are we going to get this money? We're going to have, you're going to have to look further down the road in just five years. Because I'm from outside of the city, you might say. And that's where the economy starts, out there. So, if you can figure out how we can make money out there, then you can make money in here. You're going to have to look outside. Because that's where our money comes from, it's from the beginning. We bring the money from outside into town. I've been in agriculture all my life, for over 60, 70 years. There's where your money's going to start. So, if you can figure out how we can make money out there, we'll bring our money to town, and then you can raise our taxes. But, it still comes down to raising money. So, till you can figure out how to raise money here, then you got something. But, until then, you don't. I'm not against, I love baseball, played it all my life back in the 50s and 60s. So, you're not older than me.
I want you to rest assured, you have five brains up here that have been working overtime trying to figure this out. We just have to make sure we do it responsibly, and we'll come up with the best thing that we can possibly, possibly do.
Tyler Hennick, again. I just want to assure you guys, Salina baseball and American Legion baseball, we just began our 89th year. And we plan on being around here for a long, long time. And we've got your back. We ask that you have ours. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'm going to suggest, if there are no more comments, I'm guessing that these younger members of the audience probably don't want to sit through the rest of this. So, we will take a four-minute recess to give you a chance to make it out to the hallway. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. You're not, you're, I can tell you don't want to.
Mayor Davis? Oh, I'm sorry. Say that again. Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 10, 2019. Item 6.2, approve resolution number 19-7715, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Travelers Property and Casualty, CO of America, the Travelers Indemnity Company, for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance program. Item 6.3, approve resolution number 19-7713, authorizing the city manager to execute a three-and-one-half-year agricultural lease agreement with Madison and Sun Farms LLC for the North Marymount Road, tract 1 through 4, city agricultural property. Item 6.4, approve resolution number 19-7717, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Ally Burris to provide indigent counsel services for the Salina Municipal Court. And item 6.5, approve calling a special study session of the city commission to tour the Salina park system on Friday, June 21st, beginning at 7:30 a.m.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor Davis, I would like to remove item 6.5.
All right, and I'm going to remove 6.4, just to ask one question. So, that leaves 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Move then second it to approve 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Hodges, if I might, mine would probably be quicker than, if you don't mind.
Yeah, whatever order you want to do.
And this is just more technical.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you for coming.
Sure.
Sure.
The, in the background, it states that the law requires courts to provide counsel for indigent defendants when the possibility exists that the defendant could be incarcerated if found guilty. Is that the only circumstance in which indigent, so a large financial penalty or liability would not be a reason?
Correct. So we don't have to appoint counsel if someone wants to fight their speeding ticket, for example, only if they face the possibility of a jail sentence being imposed if found guilty.
Okay, or if it was a large, let's say, personal liability injury at someone's house or something, that still would not?
Well, that would be outside the jurisdiction of municipal court.
Okay.
So the maximum penalty for a traffic offense that doesn't carry any jail sentence would be $500.
Okay. Learned a lot today. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm done. Thank you for indulging me.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve cons, do we do those separately, don't we?
Oh, okay. That's true. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve consent agenda 6.4.
Second.
Moved and approved to approve item 6.4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five to nothing. And now 6.5.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a really brief comment on 6.2 as well. I just want to call out our risk manager, Nancy Schuschler, because we actually had an insurance reduction and some significant savings this year. And I think that we all owe you a debt of gratitude, Nancy. So thank you for your work. Let me give you some credit today, Nancy. Thank you. Okay, 6.5. I just had a couple of questions, and I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention that we do have a special study session of the city commission this Friday, June 21st. It begins at 7:30 a.m. and goes until about 6:00 p.m. And we're going to be touring all of the park's facilities. And I did just have a question, and I don't know, it may be for Mr. Cotton, it may be for Mr. Schreg, I don't know which it is, is, and I'd asked Mr. Schreg about it, is the, what the public input received in terms of the prioritization of the types of facilities that were identified in the master plan, are those included in the weighted, or in the matrix? Is the matrix weighted to address those?
Yes, there, sorry, I didn't think my mic was on. There is a category for community unmet needs described as the projects that improve or meet the unmet facility and/or program needs identified in the 2018 Parks Master Plan. So that is one of the items. And I believe there's another category that kind of factors that in as well. Well, I guess there's intensity of use as well in terms of our current facilities, what gets heavy use. So we built this whole matrix with the intention of parroting what the park master plan gathered in the way of data and trying to build that in where we could. And then where we had kind of decision criteria without specific data, tried to provide that as well. I would note that at the end of each one of those criteria, in parentheses, there is a weighting that adds up to 100. That's a proposed weighting, proposed by staff. That can be changed. And if it is, you know, if you, if you create a much higher weighting for something, it could change the ranking that you see come out of this, this database. And I'm going on more than you might have wanted, but as a little bit of background, so there were about 187 different items that were pulled out of the park master plan, dealt with individually. And there were about eight park staff person, people, division heads and otherwise, that rated each one of those items by the 12 criteria. And that combined rating and the weighting system is then what produced the ranking that, that we have for you in this packet of information. The other thing, if I could, I'd like to note is, the itinerary that was in the packet has been revised a little bit. I think a park staff person drove the route over the weekend and might have reorganized it to be a little bit more efficient, and I think they shaved 30 minutes off of, of the itinerary. So if you're going to rely on in the itinerary, use the one that's in the handout that you received rather than what was in the packet.
And speaking of the itinerary, are there going to be able to be any public accommodations made for members of the public that want to attend? And what does that look like? Who should they contact?
Well, what we've done is made arrangements for two forms of transportation, either a Citygo bus or a Durham bus, depending on what, what our initial turnout is. So that's all with the intention of you as a governing body, as well as citizens all traveling together in the same vehicle.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
And as I stated, because of business conflicts, I may not be able to make the entire day. So just.
Are you ready for a motion? Mayor Davis, I move that we approve consent agenda, consent agenda, item 6.5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 6.5. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now move to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 19-11002, amending the future land use map of the Salina-Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of property located at the west end of Coach Light Lane, west of North Ninth Street, and south of I-70 from future conservation area to future commercial.
Okay, this ordinance was passed on first reading last Monday, and there have been no comments received. Any questions of staff from the commissioners? Any public comment?
Joan Ratzleff, Salina. I spoke against the, allowing the development because of the, you know, being in the floodway. And I wanted to also speak to changing the future land use plan because, in my opinion, developing in the floodway, and I would say, perhaps my professional opinion, developing in the floodway is reckless. And I don't know that accepting a high, an outside engineer who may be biased, I don't know if accepting their opinion is, is quite as complete as, as should be presented to the city commission. But I remain concerned about changing the future land use map in the comprehensive plan because changing from conservation to commercial use means creating hard surfaces, such as pavement and roofing. And it's elementary. Increased runoff leads to more flooding and scouring flows. And like I mentioned last time, we generally tend to fail to consider cumulative effects. We just look at each project as it goes, and it's the cumulative effects that cause us problems. The, because the more it's done, the worse it's get. The U.S. Corps of Engineers case is a glaring example that it taught us that employing a narrow perspective to manage natural waters contributes to disaster. And I ask you to deny the request and keep the map as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? The action from the commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 19-11002 on second reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? Ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Nay.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. Move to 7.2.
Item 7.2, first reading ordinance number 19-11004, amending Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 8-172.1 and Section 8-175 of the Salina Code to add a new category of contractor licensing for a specialty hood suppression, spray booth suppression contractor.
Just a one.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm here to request an amendment to the City of Salina Code, Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 8-172, Chart 1, and Section 8-175, Chart 2. In summary, in October 2016, the commission approved an amendment to adopt the 2012 International Fire Code 14-3-1-105.1.1. This amendment allows the fire department to not only require permits for fire sprinklers, fire alarms, hood suppression, spray booth suppression installations, but charge for those permits as well. While working through this permitting process, we have discovered we had not accounted for the hood suppression, spray booth suppression contractor licensure. On April 9th of 2007, the Salina Commission adopted ordinance number 06-10323, requiring the licensure of building contractors, specialty contractors, and registered craftsmen. These requirements are found in Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 8-171 through 8-200.4 of the Salina Municipal Code. The ordinance established licensing categories, testing requirements, insurance requirements, continuing education requirements, as well as enforcement, discipline, expiration, and renewal of licenses. You might ask, what are hood suppression and spray booth systems? Both are life safety systems that act automatically in the event of a spontaneous fire. Hood suppressions are provided in all type 1 commercial, all type 1 commercial hoods placed above cooking equipment that can be either activated automatically or manually by a restaurant employee. The intent is to suppress the fire before it grows beyond the hood system as a whole and not spread to other parts of the building. The spray booth suppression is very similar, only it's installed in spray booths often found in manufacturing and auto body shops. It is designed to function in the same manner as a hood suppression unit as it would activate a spontaneous, as upon spontaneous fire automatically, or can be activated by an employee of a business to prevent the spread of fire to other parts of the building. Both systems are designed to prevent the loss of life and property, and both of these systems are required by the City of Salina's adopted code. Currently, there is no specialty contractor category in the Salina Municipal Code for specialty hood suppression, spray booth suppression contractors. This request for the code change stems from the fact that all other life safety contractors, fire alarm, fire sprinkler, are currently required to be licensed contractors by the same code. As previously mentioned, all other life safety contractors are required to be licensed under the current Salina Code. It is our intent to bring the hood suppression, spray booth suppression contractors to the same level as other life safety system contractors are currently. The Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office currently requires an annual registration with proof of insurance and continuing education, whereas our ordinance is a three-year renewal process. The plan would be to reciprocate the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office registration requirements for our license. However, the city licensing cycle will remain as a three-year cycle. The draft ordinance indicates an effective date, excuse me, 90 days following the adoption. This 90-day period will allow staff to notify identified stakeholders and provide them with pertinent information about new requirements. On May 14th, 2019, the City of Salina Building Advisory Board approved the proposed license amendment, or license requirement by a vote of nine to zero. There is no fiscal impact associated with this request. Staffs identified the four following options for your consideration by the city commission. One, this commission could approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 172.1, Chart 1, and Section 8-175, Chart 2 of the municipal, Salina Municipal Code, and approve the ordinance number 19-11004 on the first reading. Two, the city commission could approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 172.1, Chart 1, and Section 8-175, Chart 2, in the Salina Municipal Code with any additions. And three, the city commission could maintain status quo and decide to propose amendment to Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 172.1, Chart 1, and Section 8-175, Chart 2 of the Salina Municipal Code should not be made at this time. In this case, motion should be made to deny the proposed text amendment. The fire department supports recommendation number one. The new ordinance will provide the same level of requirements for all life safety contractors. Can I answer any questions for you?
It didn't say in here, but I take it that's for, this is for both new construction and remodel.
Yes, sir.
And I did have a kind of a follow-up question to Commissioner Hoppeck's. There was the $170 permit fee that was referenced in here. When somebody goes to renew their, you know, their inspection certificates or whatever, is that 100, is the 170 for the initial installation only? Or when somebody has their facilities inspected, is it like 170 for the sprinkler system and 170 for the, the booth and 170 for, for each item that's inspected? How exactly does that work?
So the, the intended plan is to, if you were going to build a new building that had all those systems within it, all those fees would be just in that initial permit fee.
Okay.
The only time the, the outstanding fee, such as the $170 you're talking about, would be if it was for a standalone system, you wanted to change the occupancy of a building, and then it would require a sprinkler system. So you would have to pull a permit just for that sprinkler addition to that building, as in changing an occupancy to a restaurant, you wanted to add a hood system, you would have to pay that plan review fee, that permit fee, to do that standalone permit. It's not intended to add all these on top of a building permit.
So say if a business was adding a hood and was adding like a fire suppression system at the same time, it would be the flat $170 fee?
For, if that was a remodel, or if it was new?
If it were a remodel.
I, I think that was, would be, those were, both fees would imply, because it's a plan review fee, inspection fee.
Commissioners, the, what Fire Marshal Long described in terms of rolling it into a permit versus standalone is consistent with our approach on, on building permits in general. We try to treat them as a consolidated submission review and approval. So whether it's a plumbing item, or a mechanical or electrical item, we don't require, we pull one building permit for an all-inclusive set of plans and a project. Only when we have a standalone scope of work for electrical upgrades would we require a standalone electrical permit. So that, you know, that's kind of the scenario that he was describing. I think the fee's going to apply on a permit basis, and we just have to look at what was submitted and what's all rolled into one permitted scope of work. So if it's a standalone set of work, we'd have to look at what's being proposed and what's being issued as one standalone permit.
Okay, so if it was a remodel and several of these elements were in play, each element would have a separate fee?
If they were going to do, I would assume if they were going to do a sprinkler plant, a sprinkler system, hood system, we would roll those two together because they're both life safety systems and there would be one fee. But, but I'm not sure at this time. We, we haven't gotten to that point of permitting any of these systems. And, and that's all based on plan review time, going out and doing the inspections associated with those systems is what that fee is for.
Thank you.
Was there any particular impetus for changing the licensing? Is this to bring us in compliance with the state policy, or were we having problems with these systems being put in before?
Well, they are the only light, the hood suppression, spray booth suppression contractors are the only non-licensed contractors in the city that, that put these systems in. And from a life safety perspective, you want someone you know is licensed and has the skills it takes to, to put these systems in because they are a life safety system. You know, we all go out to restaurants and eat, and we want to know that if they have a fire in their kitchen, that suppression system's going to work as intended. And so we wanted to get them to the, kind of the next level to be even with fire sprinkler contractors, alarm contractors.
Yeah, I think it was a function of consistency in our own code, more so than synchronization with the state or others. We, we use the International Fire Code as kind of our standard set of codes, and as we adopted it, that provided for the licensing requirement. We didn't get it consistently implemented.
So that would be the way we'd find out that we did not have licensing requirements?
Yeah, we kind of missed it when we looked at, when we started looking at permitting. Yeah, we kind of missed it when we looked at, when we started looking at permitting, we realized that we didn't have a category for this trade.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. That's back to Long. Any questions or comments from the public? Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 172.1, Chart 1, and Section 8-175, Chart 2 of the Salina Municipal Code, and approve ordinance number 19-11004 on first reading.
Second.
All right, I'm going to refrain from repeating all that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. And we can go to 7.3.
Item 7.3, Compliance Engine Services, 7.3A, first reading, ordinance number 19-11005, amending Chapter 14, Article 3, Division 1 pertaining to the required electronic submittal of all fire and life safety inspection reports to the fire department via a third-party administrator designated by the city or via an alternative method provided, approved by the fire chief. And item 3, 7.3B, Resolution Number 19-7718, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Bryser LLC for compliance engine services related to the tracking of fire and safety system inspections and commercial businesses within the city of Salina.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Just to give you some background, currently, the Salina Prevention Division completes approximately, excuse me, approximately 1,700 annual fire and life safety inspections of an estimated 2,400 businesses that we have in Salina. During these annual inspections, one of the key life safety components we look at are fire alarms, fire sprinklers, hood suppression, and spray booth systems. These systems have been shown to not only save lives but property as well. All the above listed systems require either an annual or semi-annual inspection to be completed by a third-party contractor. The contractor then leaves that inspection report with the property owner or business manager. These reports rarely get back to us at the fire department. This is where Compliance Engine works with the contractors to complete a web-based, or to provide a web-based system where contractors can enter the inspection report, which, once entered, will be passed to us, onto us at the fire department. It is important that we receive these reports to verify a complete and working system, and if any deficiencies are noted by the contractor. If the system is, was found to be deficient in any way, Compliance Engine not only sends us a report, but with permission from us, will notify the business owner via pre-approved violation letter citing the system's deficiencies, providing them, and providing them with a window of time that the system would need to be repaired within. By utilizing Compliance Engine, by utilizing Compliance Engine's notification feature, licensed contractors will be assured the system inspections and maintenance work will be scheduled and performed consistently per Salina's adopted code. Local jurisdictions such as McPherson, Hutchinson, Overland, Olathe, Lenexa, Kansas City, and Wichita currently utilizing Compliance Engine for code compliance, and have found much higher, a much higher percentage of compliance, and licensed contractors have seen an increase in workload due to better accountability for these life safety systems. As stated earlier, these systems are vitally important for saving lives and property. Annually, we find approximately 150 out of 540 systems that have not received their annual inspection, or have deficiencies that can, could prevent them from functioning properly. That is why Compliance Engine is such a great tool for us in the Prevention Division. It saves us the time of follow-up inspections, ensures properly functioning systems, and allows us to move closer to our goal of inspecting 100% of businesses annually, which ultimately provides a safer community for all who come to shop, eat, and work in Salina. Compliance Engine meets the city's Salina strategic goal number three. The city will provide the highest quality services, consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. So, as far as commission action, we have identified the following actions for the city commission's consideration. For each action below, the city commission has, has these options. One, approve as presented. Two, amend action as presented. Three, postpone action, or four, not approve. Again, this item will require two motions. The first motion will be, one, approve ordinance number 19-11005 on first reading to amend the International Fire Code as adopted by the city of Salina, and the new section to Chapter 14, Article 3, Division 1, to be numbered 14-3-1-107.2 pertaining to the required electronic submittal of all fire and life safety inspection reports to the fire department via a third-party administrator designated by the city, or via an alternative method approved by the fire chief. And the second would be to approve Resolution Number 19-7718, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Bryser LLC for compliance engine services related to tracking of fire and safety system inspections and commercial businesses within the city of Salina.
Any questions?
My question is, there's the $15 fee to be paid. Now, is that paid by all 1,700 businesses, or is it just certain businesses that have the fire and safety?
So, the business don't, doesn't actually pay the fee. Well, they may or may not. What we've found in other communities, so the, the fee is paid by the contractor when they complete that online inspection report. They pay that $15. What we've found in other communities, in talking to other contractors that work with these systems, is that their workload is increasing enough that they don't even charge that $15 fee. Or they don't, they aren't adding that on to their inspection fee, because they are picking up that extra work. In other cases, what we've seen is those same contractors that are doing inspections in these, in these communities with Compliance Engine already, they've already increased their rates by that $15 fee. So when they come to work in Salina, they're already charging these businesses that same fee that they're charging for a similar system in other communities. So, the only, so to be more specific about your question, no. So we have approximately 540 life safety systems, and that would include fire sprinkler, fire alarm, and hood suppression, and booth systems. So, there'd be about 540 systems that would have to pay to have that. Not all the businesses require that, no.
And there's no cost to the city, the way you said it's?
There is no cost to the city. And the $15 fee they're charging basically is paying for their staff to receive these notifications of these inspection reports. It looks for and identifies any deficiencies, notifies us, and they would send us an email. Once we read that email, we would say, hey, yeah, we need to go ahead and send this business a notification that they need to correct these.
And prior to that, the fire department was doing those inspections?
Trying.
Trying. And obviously, these companies are licensed and bonded, I would, I would guess.
Just as a clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, our inspection was going onsite to see if there were records onsite that a contractor had conducted the inspection.
That is correct.
I mean, our staff has never been in the business of actually inspecting the equipment in question. It's more trying to track the fact that a licensed contractor had conducted the required inspection at the, in the timeline that it's required.
That's what I couldn't make out, because I wasn't sure if, if the fire department's paying the $15, or whether you inspect, then call a contractor in, and the contractor pays the 15.
So, all, so the Salina, City of Salina adopted code, the International Fire Code 2012, requires fire alarms, fire sprinkler systems receive an annual inspection to make sure that they're functioning properly. And then hood suppression systems, like what's in every restaurant that fries things, they, on those fire suppression systems, they're required a semi-annual. And it's in the report that you receive, but what we're finding is, especially the restaurants, when we go out to do our annual inspection, we find that their hood system hasn't been serviced, so they'll get it serviced. So they're only servicing actually once a year, when they're supposed to be twice a year. And the, so, that's where we get that better compliance, a safer community, safer places for all of us to dine, because we've seen that. We've had a couple fires over the last year where we've seen systems that malfunctioned because they hadn't been serviced like they were supposed to be.
And it probably goes without saying, but in that model that Troy described, you now have owners of systems reacting once we show up. And so our first communication is the fact they're non-compliant, and then the fire department's tasked with imposing a deadline, tracking that, going back, and confirming that they've complied. This is supposed to get ahead of that in terms of contractor enters the information, the system's tracking the deadline, it can identify non-compliance without having to go out onsite and track down that paperwork and have a whole conversation, avoid that entire conversation and enforcement cycle.
That makes sense. Thank you. I read it about three times. I said, I'm missing something here.
I understand.
I'm thinking I just wait till the meeting.
I understand.
All right, it'd be, well, I'm sorry, any other questions, comments? Any questions, concerns from the public? Be easy to entertain 7.3A if there's a desire to do so.
Mayor, oh, sorry. Mayor Davis, I move that we approve ordinance number 19-11005 on first reading to amend the International Fire Code as adopted by the city of Salina, and add a new section to Chapter 14, Article 3, Division 1, to be numbered 14-3-1-107.2 pertaining to the required electronic submittal of all fire and life safety inspection reports to the fire department via a third-party administrator designated by the city, or via an alternative method approved by the fire chief.
Second.
That was a lot. Any more questions? All in favor approving ordinance 19-11005 on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five to nothing. And, and the action on 7.3B?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 19-7718, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Bryser LLC for the compliance engine services related to the tracking of fire and safety system inspections and commercial businesses within the city of Salina.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? All in favor, 7.3B, Resolution 19-7718, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you. Item 7.4.
Item 7.4, first reading, ordinance number 19-11006, amending Section 7-34 of the Salina Code pertaining to keeping of bees and repealing the existing section.
Mr. Wood? Mayor Commissioners, I'm Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. I purposely followed Troy, because this is a lot easier to understand than the last item. In 1968, the city adopted an ordinance that managed the keeping of bees within the city, and that process brought every, every person that wanted to keep bees back to the city commission for approval on a permit basis. In April, you guys actually had one of those requests, and you approved it. At the time, the city commission kind of expressed some interest in maybe taking a look at those ordinances and bringing that in-house, something that didn't have to come to the commission at every turn. So, we've taken a look at some of the best management practices for keeping of bees, and kind of make it short and sweet. There's four regulations that are in this ordinance. We have a registration, so they have to come and register with the city. A distance requirement, so they're not located too close to a public building or a neighboring dwelling, or, you know, we don't want bees right next to the sidewalk where people can walk by. Number of hives, would be four hives at any location. And then the last requirement is just signage somewhere on the premises that says, there's bees here. So, kind of short and sweet. It also brings that process back to be managed within city staff. That would be something that we probably delegate to our animal services folks. So, your options are to adopt on first reading ordinance 19-11006, amending Section 734 of city code to update the process for allowing the keeping of bees within the city. You could make amendments to that if you'd like to. Deny the ordinance if you would like to, or postpone it for a later date. But we would ask if you would decide you want to deny it, that you would entertain the two bee permit applications that we have received since the last one was approved in April. There is something a little bit timely about the approval, getting our bees set in place in the right time of the year. I don't understand all that part of it, but they'd like it to be done sooner rather than later. So, I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Our animal services people are here as well, if you have any questions.
Was the signage required on the previous ordinances?
No, that wasn't required, and that's something I should mention. This isn't something that we'll retroactively go back to those people that were approved in the past. We'll consider those people approved based on the current ordinances in place. Unless you as a commission would like us to do that, we would have to update the ordinance between now and the next reading to include a little bit of a language that would send us back to look at what's been previously approved.
So, current beehives, there's no signage?
That's correct.
And the purpose of the signage is to?
Just to notify some, you know, if somebody was coming on premises and they were allergic to bees or something like that, that they would know that there's bees there.
Or for folks like me who are just afraid, um, who will walk across the street and boycott that property completely.
And I do believe that the last, the one that was approved in April, when we had the inspection done, the inspector asked us at that time, which was at the school that I was working at, that we put a, recommended that we had a sign, some signage put up that, you know, with that there was, there was bees. My only other question is your distance requirements. You got 40 feet from any public park, school, or medical facility. I've been contacted now by three other schools now that would like to do the observation beehives, which are actually inside the classroom. So, I guess we need-
We could certainly strike the school requirement from that.
We need to take a look at that, because, you know, they are safe. They're inside of a, they're inside of a sealed hive, and they do go outside of the wall, to the outside. But I did notice that we did put 40 feet from any public park, school, or-
We could certainly strike school from that language. I don't think that would cause any harm.
Observation hive, is it the outside part, in part of the yard that the children typically play in?
Typically, no. No, it's usually, usually out beside a part of the school to wherever it's accessible to where it's not in a playground area or anything like that. And it's usually just a inch and a half tube that goes through the wall, and sticks out from the wall just a little bit to where the bees can enter through the tube into the observation hive, which is locked down and screwed shut to where our little angels can't open it up and play with them.
Is there any way to restrict the area right near the, where they, or you think that's not necessary?
We've, we've not found it necessary. They don't, they don't come and go in that area. The kids don't, so.
You can tell who has the bee phobia here on the commission, but, okay. Any other questions?
Question, Hoppeks?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or concerns from the audience, from the public?
Daniel Echoff, 655 Highland. I think I heard you say four hives, is that correct, was the limit? Was there a reason for that, or is it just arbitrary?
These are the best management practices that we saw from other communities, so that four was kind of the limit we saw in most places, so.
All right, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 19-11006, also striking from the distant requirement for schools, the updating the city code and the regulation of keeping bees in the city.
Second.
I do have one question about the school. If a property abutting of school playground has a hive five feet from the fence, you then have kids five feet from that hive. Not to throw a wrench into it, but is that a possible scenario? Or at least would need a, need a sign?
I think it definitely is a scenario. An alternate approach could be to create an exception for observation hives placed on school property. At that point, you have the school being the one that's initiating the bees and- At that point, you have the school being the one that's initiating the bees in proximity to the schoolchildren versus striking the distance requirement altogether, then as a neighbor, I could put it on the adjoining property line or something like that. And if that's of interest to you, we can certainly come back on second reading with that amendment in place.
That'd be acceptable. Yeah.
Yeah.
Would it be easier to add that today, or just wait? I don't know.
I'm betting the city attorney would rather formalize that.
Okay. We can do it second. All right.
We could expedite the parliamentary procedure aspects if the movement would want to simply revise the motion along that line, would certainly expedite the matter if you'd like.
Revised the motion to read, approve ordinance number 19-11006, and strike from the distance requirement, the school, and the school, I guess the school should have, or the school be allowed to have...
If this is helpful, my suggestion would be that you add an exception for observation hives on school property.
Observation beehives on school property.
To be refined by second reading.
Well, we'll massage that a little bit between first and second.
If that works for the second.
Second.
All right. Thank you all for taking care of all my fears here. All in favor of the, let's see, ordinance 19-11006. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries on first reading. Item 7.5.
Item 7.5, Salina Media Connection Agreement Follow-Up.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Jacob Wood, deputy city manager. Couple of weeks ago, at a study session, we discussed the agreement with Salina Media Connection for the services that they provide. I'm just going to provide a brief update, or not update, but just overview of the history. I'm not going to go quite into as detail as I did a couple of weeks ago, but since that was a study session, I will kind of do a little overview here. So, in 1992, we established a franchise agreement with Communication Services, Inc., which later became Cox. At that time, we established a 5% cable franchise fee. That agreement also outlined the requirement for dedicated public education and government channels. We'll call those PEG channels from here on out. It also designated Community Access Television, Inc. as, to manage those PEG channels, and it required a franchise fee payment of $150,000 for facilities, and then $200,000 for equipment that went to access as kind of a startup fee. At the same time in 1992, we had our first agreement with Access Television. That was a five-year agreement. It established a dedication of 4%, or 40% of the cable franchise fee that the city collected to go to access, and that covered the cost of their operation of the PEG channels. It also dedicated space in Memorial Hall and provided the scope of services that Access would provide. And that included things like operate the public access cable channels, operate educational government access channel, operate the Community Access Center, and then also provide training and playback of cable casting of an average of 20 hours in a week. One thing that I didn't mention previously in the study session, they also, at the time, did receive a pass-through, so they were able to actually collect additional funds from the cable company. The cable company charged an additional fee on top that went directly to Access. That's something I didn't mention in the past. Actually, it was brought to my attention after the study session. So, we had a couple of extensions of that contract in 1997, and then in 2002. And then in 2006, state legislature changed the way that they manage franchise fees. Basically, what they did is they standardized the franchise fees so that the city franchise fee was no, or city franchise agreement was no longer valid. And so, all cable franchises are now operated on kind of a state standard, standard agreement. Cox continued to pay the city 5%, but at that time, they were no longer required to pay the pass-through to Access. So, Access did see a reduction in funding at that time. We had a new agreement in 2007 with them, and what that did is it increased our funding. So, we increased our funding from the 40% of our franchise fee up to 70%, and then we ratcheted that back 5% a year until it remained stable at 40%. And that's how it is still to this day. There was another agreement in 2011, and it did kind of the same thing. And then, the most recent agreement was penned in 2015. So, that kind of brings us up to date as far as the history goes with Access. And at this point, we are discussing the agreement because the way the agreement works is if we provide, if we don't say anything, we don't do anything, that agreement automatically renews on a one-year period every year. So, this is the time of year that we have to have this discussion if we want to change something. So, at the study session, we discussed some of the possible expectations, maybe changing some of those expectations that we require of, and I'll call it Salina Media Connection from here on out. I know it's confusing between Access and Media Connection in my mind. But what we outlined as possible expectations for them was higher-quality videos, videos published quickly online, videos that would be closed captioned, videos translated to Spanish, maybe cameras placed in different locations so that get better camera angles, the live videos shared through different social media outlets and on their website, agenda integration through the video player so that you could follow along with the agenda and kind of click a button and it would take you to a certain item, on-demand video searching, video graphics and title overlays. And then, we kind of highlighted some of those that we think might be priorities that we'd put to the top of the list. Improved video quality was one of those. And then, coverage of the study sessions is something that's come up kind of over and over in the last couple of weeks, and maybe before that as well. Timely publication of meeting videos online. We've seen kind of a lag over the last couple of years. Sometimes videos don't get posted very quickly. A better organized video library on their YouTube site, so they're more easily searchable. And then, closed captioning. At the study session, Salina Media Connection did provide a presentation. They said that many of the things that we've highlighted here that they could do today, but some of the other ones are a little bit harder and they'd require some additional equipment in order to get it up to the speed with the priorities that we've outlined. So, what we've done here is we've kind of just maybe refined some of the options that we presented in the study session a couple of weeks ago. The first option that you have is to just allow the agreement to keep going. You don't have to do anything to make that happen, and the agreement would go on as it is today. Any of these other options would require that we provide notice to Salina Media Connection, but by July 1st, in order to move in a different direction. So, the second option is to provide notice to termination of the current contract and then provide direction to staff to negotiate a new agreement with Salina Media Connection. If you choose this option, we would have the intent to negotiate a new contract. We could add some reporting requirements in there, and I've listed some things in your packet that would, so we would have the priorities maybe that we've outlined above. And then, some reporting requirements that would include things like viewership on the PEG channels, viewership on YouTube channels, you know, what kind of hits they're getting on social media and on their website. And then, also, kind of just tracking some of the things that we're unable to track today, like the number of volunteer hours that are being, you know, put towards doing videos, the kind of programs they're produced, how many producers are on-site, and actually doing the work, and those sorts of things. The third option would be to provide notice of termination by July 1st and then direct staff to seek out an alternative service provider. We have done some preliminary work on that, and there are providers out there that do many of the things that we would like them to do, but I want to say that that doesn't include the things they do out in the community and the other, you know, they do the meetings, but they wouldn't do some of the other things that Access or Salina Media Connection is able to do right now. And then, the last option would be to have us take a look at maybe doing this in-house, and that would include increasing staff and equipment and that sort of thing. So, Salina Media Connection has a representation here. I think Greg Stevens is in the back, and there's a couple of board members. I'd be happy to stand for any questions, and I believe they're prepared, if you have questions for them as well.
Any questions?
I just, I guess I've got one. If we, if we terminate the contract as of July 1st, does that mean any, until the contract's renewed, we wouldn't have any?
No, and that's just notification. So, we would notify them by July 1st that we're going to terminate, but the contract would go until the end of the year. So, it would be up in December. So, the intent, if you choose that and want us to, you know, renegotiate or negotiate a new contract, would be that we would have that in place by the end of the year.
As part of the contract, also that they're doing the school board presentations, so if we would look to another vendor to provide these services, would we be looking for someone that also takes up those other public entities that they're broadcasting?
Yeah, I think we would be looking for, there's, I can pull the contract, there's, they are required to do, actually, let me just pull that section real quick.
Well, and I guess what I mean is if that were the case, then we would be looking to those other entities to work with them possibly to be satisfied with the outsourcing we select.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct.
Currently, they cover the county and the school board. I know the county contributes an nominal amount compared to what we contribute. So, as we've had conversations with outside vendors, we've inventoried the number of meeting locations and the number of meetings because that all factors into the pricing that they offer. But, you know, that, we might have an opportunity to address the fund, the amount of meetings covered and the funding provided by other agencies as part of this conversation as well.
Right. At this point, the school does not contribute anything, and the county contributes 15,000 a year. So, the majority of their funding does come from the city, and that's around $200,000 or $220,000 a year that we contribute, so...
And do we have any better ballpark figure of what outside services would cost us?
We've actually only looked at one service provider, and they said that they could do with an upfront cost of around $50,000 to $75,000 for equipment, and then $100,000 a year annually after that. But that's a very preliminary outlook, and we really haven't done the work. So, if that was a, if the commission wants us to go through that process, we would develop an RFP and find out who's actually interested and kind of see what, you know, what's out there. So, I think there are probably some, there's probably a lot of other providers. We've just found one that we kind of got a preliminary look at, so... But I do think that we could find some cost savings from what we pay Salina Media Connection today. But that does eliminate, you know, some of the outside, the other stuff that they do, the things outside of the meetings.
I would add, the one, we have been in contact with, if you're hard to perceive...
Sorry. I would add that the one firm that we've been in contact with seems pretty seamless in terms of having a system in place. So, we're, I think there's a level of comfort that they could meet expectations, and then if we wanted to pursue it, we could do competitive RFPs and kind of feel out the rest of the field in greater detail.
Our current contract would allow us to amend it at any time during the year, such that if we wanted to negotiate a new contract by the year's end, there's no reason we could not amend our current contract now to include filming of the study sessions, let's say, beginning July 2nd.
Right. I know there's been ongoing conversations that predate me about covering the study sessions, but technically, I think the way the contract reads is it's in place through the end of the calendar year, and if we want to deviate from that, we need to provide notice by July 1st. So, I think there may be some receptivity on the part of Salina Media Connection, trying to make sure I get that right. In fact, I had some conversations with the previous executive director about whether they could cover the study sessions, and whether that'd be at an added cost, and what that meant in the way of hardware, but then he ultimately resigned in those conversations kind of stalled out.
And my intention would be if there was an added cost, pay the added cost, and if hardware was needed, we'd provide it since it seems to be a goal we want to attain. Anyway, so truly, I mean, at our cost, but we could negotiate that to start sooner than next year's contract.
I think that would depend a little bit on Salina Media Connection's response. I don't have any reason to think that they'd be hesitant, but technically, we have a contract in place through the end of the year that doesn't obligate them to provide that service. But that doesn't mean we couldn't have a conversation about the cost and implementation prior to the year-end. But it'd be a little bit, it'd be a little bit dependent on Salina Media Connection's receptivity to that.
I mean, if they had a five-year contract instead of a one-year contract, and we wanted to do that this year, I would think we would at least let them know, hey, we really want to talk to you about amending this contract because this is very important to us.
Well, and that's essentially the conversation I had with the prior executive director before he resigned. So, as I understood, I was kind of waiting on a response of their research in terms of staffing cost, hardware cost, waiting for a proposal to come back.
So, if we went with option three then and put RFPs out there, that means that Salina Media Connection could also bid, you know, put their bid in for the...
Certainly. And we could, I mean, we could do hybrid. We could do both, provide notice and say we're going to try and come to terms on a new agreement and see what our options are as well. I mean, we could do those kind of both in conjunction.
Because I think that's where I'm having a little bit of trouble, looking at some of the different options, because I don't know that I have enough data to make the, make a decision. For instance, you know, if we were to go with something in-house, which does have some appeal to me, quite frankly, what would we be looking at in terms of equipment? What would we be looking at? I mean, how many staff would that take, and how, you know, and how much would that cost? I mean, it's something that I wouldn't mind seeing information on because I don't know once you, I mean, is, are two full-time people enough to handle that? And does that look like, you know, one full-time and three part-time? Or, you know, because, you know, we meet later in the day, there's going to be evening meetings. Right now, we cover a lot of meetings, and so, and I would assume that if we did it in-house, then that staff person would take over some responsibilities and work with Rachel in terms of integrating like Salina News and that kind of stuff, too. So, a little bit more maybe information on what our costs would be to both get it started up and ongoing to do it in-house. And I gave Mr. Rolfs a heads-up because I know that band, sufficient bandwidth is an issue, and so, what does adding another server look like? I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's those hard costs for the startup, and then there's, you know, the ongoing costs to maintain it. And I guess my question to you, too, is what do other communities do? I mean, in your research, I mean, like, what does, you know, Lawrence, or Manhattan, or Hayes, or Wichita do? Is that something that, you know, most of them handle it in-house, or most of them contract with a private entity?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we have enough information to give you a clear answer on that. I mean, my experience for being in another community was we had an outside provider come in and do it. The company that we've been in contact with does two or three communities in the state, so they're, but I don't know about the in-house. I don't know how common that is, but, I mean, that's certainly something we could look into for sure. I guess the point is, we really need to know...
To make a decision about...
Yeah, we need to know which direction.
Yeah, agree.
Because we haven't put a whole lot of staff time. It's not worth it for us to put a great deal of staff time in, and you guys say, well, we're happy with what we have, let's just keep going, so...
And if I could, I would add kind of the basis for the staff recommendation of renegotiation of contract is I think, I think we have a history of these type of conversations, but I don't know that we have a history of clearly articulating both our expectations as well as required reporting elements to kind of ascertain how much value they're providing to the community. Unfortunately, and we talked about it in the study session, there's not a real good way of quantifying viewership because they don't, Nielsen doesn't track these particular channels. I don't know that YouTube is entirely representative, but the thinking of this, you know, proposed approach is crystallize all that or clarify that in fairness to Salina Media Connection to be more clear of our expectations and accountability, and then we can report back whether, so, in a way that you can kind of start to decide whether it's... whether it's providing value.
I'm a little bit with Commissioner Hodges here. I had three, four, and five kind of highlighted because I think there's kind of a hybrid there that I'd like to see us do. I guess mine, my first thought would be that we, you know, give notice that we're terminating the contract as July 1st, not saying that Salina Media Connection doesn't have an opportunity to step in and give us their, their, their options of what they would do. Couple of questions I have. I know we currently have two stations that are through Salina Media Group. That's Channel 20 and 21. Is there a reason we have two channels? And is there an additional cost for having those? Because a lot of times I'll go to Channel 20 and 21, and there's nothing on either one of them. And then a lot of times I go to Channel 21, and I think there's programs that might be downloaded that aren't specific to the community. And I'm not sure how much interest there is in them. I think, my thought process is, as a city commission, we owe the city the ability to, to, you know, have the city commission meetings. And if we're going to do study sessions, I'm okay with that, monitored. Slayton County needs to pay their portion if we're going to do that. I didn't see anywhere in here where we're getting, where we even talked about the school board. But I know they're, they're, they're shown on Channel 20, I believe, or is it 21?
Yeah, and I don't see that in the agreement either. So, I'm not sure if that's a, I mean, maybe somebody from Salina Media Connection could speak to how that came to be, or.
I think Mr. Banksen may have the history on the, or the answer to your question about the differentiation between the channels.
As, as some may recall, there were three stations at one time. A function of the statutory change that Mr. Wood referred to included a provision that the city could request the PEG access channels, up to as many as two, as long as the city took care of any expense associated with delivering that system to the point in the system where the video service provider could simply transmit it. So, that's why there are two, and can be no more than two, under the current statute.
And our responsibility is just to provide them the content. They, I mean, they, they're the pipeline, and we give it to the pipeline.
Right, I, there are those, I'm sure, in the room that can technically describe the point at which we have delivered that in a way that it can then be transmitted. But, yes, I think you're right.
I guess my thoughts are, I'd like to see us have one channel and do it well instead of having two channels and not having the quality that I think we should have, both in, in content or in the actual, you know. A lot of times, and I don't know how we, you know, and I think this is part of what we discuss. I know like when we've had presentations done on the river, you go to watch it on television, and you can't see the screen, you can't hear the speaker. So, I'm not sure what, what we're really getting out of some of those, those, you know, broadcasts. So, that's just my input.
I think this would be an opportunity for us to specify clearly what we expect. You know, doing the math, I'm going to call it access and Salina Media Connection, twenty-seven year history. And I think just to consider throwing them out without a chance to come up to our standards wouldn't be very fair. An outside provider in Texas is not going to do local programming, education, training, staffing, recruit volunteers, train high school students, show the Christmas parade. I mean, they're going to give you the meetings. But I'd like to believe our access television is a lot more than just showing meetings. We take it for granted, and it's probably underutilized, but there's no other format in which you're going to get the opportunity to produce independent, well, to show independent programming without really much in the way of censorship.
And can all of that be done on one channel? I mean, is there a reason we have government and educate? I mean, can all those programming?
I'm not aware of a reason why it can. It may be a volume question, and Mr. Stevens may actually be the best person to answer that.
Or I forget. Just to speak to something that you said, Mayor Davis, and I agree. We've got a, we've got a very long history with, with access, and I'd like to be respectful of that. But I think in the last twenty-seven years, how we produce content has fundamentally changed. I mean, we're, we're all of an older generation. We have cable, we watch television. But, younger generations, they produce their own content. They post it online. And I feel like there's, there's, there's kind of a generational thing that's there. I mean, where they're just, they're bypassing the whole formal structure of broadcasting content, and they're just going right to YouTube, or they're going right to Facebook or, you know, Instagram or whatever, whatever their platform of choice is. And so, I think that's where I concur with Commissioner Hoppeck in terms of having that Channel 21 for, you know, to produce public content. I don't know, like I, I would, I would prefer to see us focus on one thing and do it really well. But I don't know if that's in line with the mission of, of Salina Media Connection.
Because I, I think that's an opportunity, an option that once you give it up, you'll never get it back on a, on a medium as widespread as, as our cable. I would do everything to hold on to that second channel as long as we can. And we may have to teach the older ones how to produce it, you know. If things have changed, then we change with them.
If I, if I could make a few comments. Greg Stevens, I'm the chairperson for Salina Media Connection. Children watch TV twenty-six hours a week, adults forty hours a week. And the trend is now that cable and TV is starting to bundle. And so, while there was a downward movement for a while towards the, over-the-top, they call it, channels, which are Facebook and all those kinds of YouTube, these cable companies are coming back with smarter ways of marketing their service. And when I talked in the study session, I talked about Contour, which Cox is doing. And younger people are, are looking into that. And it's less of a hassle than a lot of the other ways of doing things. So, I just picked that up off of Internet today from some of the trend magazines. It's that, that trend of bundling is keeping television going. And it actually has a more optimistic future than a lot of people think. There's been a lot of talk about how, you know, get rid of your channel and all that, your TV, or your cable and all that. But there are a lot of other things I'd like to kind of clarify. PEG means Public Education and Government. And I don't think we want to put political campaigns on the same channel as the government and city meetings. Maybe we do. But, we're going to have interviews with all the candidates for city commission and school board. And I don't know if we want to start overlapping into what would be the government channel. Because the government then gets into some political stuff and the legislative forums and the town halls. So, that would be one reason to try to maintain the two channels. And it's not very difficult to do. We got between fifteen and twenty pieces of equipment up there that we have to maintain. And we have to have technicians that know how to do all that. And it's different, TV is different than computer kind of equipment. I mean, we have a couple of servers, but we have encoders and decoders and quite a few other things. So, the, the challenge of maintaining is, is there. But also, and that kind of speaks to, to kind of doing it ourselves. And that doesn't, that doesn't take into account over here, which is your equipment that you're maintaining. And this needs to be maintained to meet some of the requirements that are coming up. And we can do more than we've been doing. We've been spending time looking at some of these requirements. And like the agenda integration, we're, we're integrating that now. And maybe we could be a little bit more careful and try to do a better job. And that's something that I've been talking to the staff about. We've got a really good staff. And they're mostly new people, but we have two or three, we have three people that have been here for a while. One person has ten years military experience in media and brings a lot of skills. And I would hope that we'd be careful about trying to extend this in a way that would cause them to think their jobs are at risk. Because there's six people that are working there for us, part-time. And we're getting really good value here. I heard Jason mention that the competitor's a hundred thousand dollars. If you look at what Jen's doing back there, it's a quarter of that. So, for twenty-five thousand dollars, we're getting pretty good, pretty good recording compared to a lot of other communities. Now, there's some that are doing better, and we could spend more money, and we need to update our equipment. But for, I don't know if a hundred thousand dollars a year is a good investment when compared to twenty-five. And the founding citizens in Salina had a good vision. And Dr. Davis, you mentioned some of the things that access has been doing. We've been out in the community quite a bit. We may not be marketing ourselves in the best way possible, but we're doing twenty or thirty different other kinds of things that I think will lose if we, if we go to a different model. I'm just pretty sure we would lose those kinds of opportunities. Because I don't know if, if two or three staff people in-house, working an eight-to-five job, would be able to do it. Because it's, we're, we're over there in the evening sometimes, eight to ten o'clock at night. And we should be working on weekends, too. And that's something that we're going to, we're going to be working for. So, having more than one channel is probably a good idea. The education channel was dropped when we went through the downsizing of our budget from about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand to about two-to-fifty. And we downsized our employees quite a bit. David Hawxworth had some tough decisions to make back then. And so, they dropped the education channel. And we put that, we've been recording, and we, we still record. I actually go up there and help record the USD 305 meetings. It's a little easier to do than it is here. And we put those on, on the channel with the other ones. Couple of other things I wanted to mention. This is really, really critical for us, is we've got a really strong candidate for executive director coming in Wednesday. And you're all invited to a meet and greet Saturday at the station and also at Blue Sky Thursday night to meet this candidate. She has a lot of passion about access, a lot of ideas. And we want to present the best vision for her and possibilities so that she can be somebody that can take this to the next level. And she brings with her another person that would be moving to Salina that has a, a background in IT work. So, we'd be bringing in two talented people. And I hope that what we do here, we do in a way that doesn't jeopardize the effort that we put in to try to attract this candidate. Because we, we made a big effort to try to do a national search. And we, I think we've been pretty successful with, with the results that we've had. We're fiscally responsible. We've got the ability to do some of the things and get, bring new equipment in. We're going to do podcasting, and that hasn't been mentioned here. And that's an emerging thing. We've got a podcasting room. We purchased the podcasting equipment. It was purchased before I came onboard, and we just need to get it set up. A lot of people are moving into podcasting. So, we can have an audio tape of all the meetings, and you can just listen to those rather than watch them when you're driving or something. We're willing to have more meetings. We can have more meetings now. We've added meetings. We haven't changed the contract. We've added more meetings over the last several months. We started to do more meetings around without changing the contract. So, we could do this study session next week. We want to do that. We can actually take the camera to Lakewood and do some of the meetings that are there that an outside vendor can do, because we have live streaming capabilities to do that. We just are waiting until this new executive director comes onboard so that he or she or whoever it is that we pick can, can be in a position to make decisions rather than us lock them into a situation before they get here. Our numbers aren't that bad. When I did the study session, I didn't have this information, but you can see that they're increasing. These are statistics from YouTube here. They're pretty good. This is, I mean, there's several of them that we have here. The Linden wood carving movie that we did, which was not a government, has nearly fifty thousand hits. Right here, we'll slow down a little bit, but people just keep watching that. So, given that we haven't been the best in the world, we've done pretty, pretty good, I think. I'm, I'm pretty impressed with the staff that we have now. They're really a good nucleus. Three interns, or two interns, three students that are there working. And it's giving them a good opportunity, and we can take that and do a lot more with it. So, I, I want to take your questions, because you've had good questions. We'd like to have the opportunity to answer some.
Start at this end. I have no more.
I've heard you in different contexts, and I think also in the study session last night, that you think that you can generate revenues with some of the services you provide. Could you speak to that a little bit? Is there really, are there any, is there real money in providing those services out there?
Well, I'm a business teacher, so here's what I can say about that.
Then you know profit and loss, then.
Yeah. The, the access TV stations did surveys, the Alliance for Community Media. And most, all of them generate the revenue through the same method we're doing here. The cable check-offs or fees were originally meant to help fund access stations. So, they maintain that model. Now, most of them are concerned about the current trends because the fees may be at risk for whatever reason. Same reason here. People are starting to ask questions about relevancy or something like that. So, they're looking at different models. But the Cable Act requires us to be nonprofit, and we can't do advertising. So, we can do contract-for-fee work, and we have done some of that. Steve started that last year. We did work for Rolling Hills. It was a mutually beneficial arrangement. We also have the Kansas State Network from Wichita coming up here and using our studio. That's an incredible thing. With the hospital, they're filming, recording. They're doing fifty-two of those here. We work with a handful of others, and Carol knows them better than I do because she's kind of the outreach person. And we have generated more money or more income doing that in the last year than we had probably for a long, long time. And there's opportunity for more of that in the future. And one of the candidates that's coming in is interested in exploring that some more. So, there is some, there is some potential. But I don't think we should believe that we're going to turn it into commercial TV or generate revenue that's going to substitute for the fees that the cable subscribers pay. I think that's still going to be part of it. We can maybe get another ten or twenty percent in, in the distant future, near future, perhaps.
You had a national search. How many responses did you get?
We had eleven responses. They weren't all national, but we had California, Wisconsin, outside the country, outside the state. Pretty good candidates.
So, I looked up the Linden tree wood carving that you cited. And, yeah, the views look like they're approaching five thousand. Was that produced? Was that produced in our studio?
You know, yeah, the, I don't think you can, I think there's two different sets of analytics here. And the set that you see there, and the ones that you look at, when you look at our website and it says two people viewed it. If you click inside, it's usually a lot more than that, so.
No, I understand. I was just trying to understand whether our studio is what made the production of that video possible. So it was done here locally?
Right. And then one of the recent city commission meetings I pulled up, Earth Channel also gives us analytics that we haven't been using. We had like 582 people that looked at it over a four-day period, which I think is pretty good. That means 582 people. Now, they didn't look at the whole meeting, but it'll tell us how long they looked and, and that kind of thing. Within four days after your meeting, and I don't know which one it was, but it was in the last week or two, 582 people, could have been all of you all, but people in the community were attending the meeting through, through our channel, and weren't here. So we haven't done a good enough job getting you the analytics, obviously, but.
There's a lot of that that's lacking, that's bothersome, and it's been that way for a long time. I guess the key question in my mind I'd like to ask you is, you know, there's, to me, there's two roles here. One is just the cataloging function of providing the public with, with the broadcasts and cataloging those, so that it can be accessed. And then there's the educational side of it, that goes to the community activities and the, and the things that people want to create. We've got two channels here. Do you think that you could stand alone, or you're on? If, as some commissioners have said, maybe the technology's passed you by over there, and the world's, you know, everybody's got a cellphone that costs them $1,000 now. If we focused on outsourcing, so that we can get the kind of quality that we want to have for our broadcasts with subtitling and varying languages, do you think you could, when we still supported you to some degree, could you stand alone as a, as the educational component to the community?
You mean as a public channel?
Public channel.
I think it'd be difficult. And, and also I'd say that part of the reason why you don't feel you have the quality is because of the equipment we have. We need to upgrade the equipment here. This isn't our equipment.
Yeah, but for a one-shot payment and ongoing fees, we can, we'll be contracting with someone else's equipment, and they'll, you know, we'll have that quality right away.
But we can probably get you the equipment cheaper, and your fees wouldn't be 100,000 a year. If you take that 100,000 out of our, what we have over there, we can't probably provide what we need to provide out in the community with the staff left. We can't have five or six staff people. We've got to have an IT kind of a person. We've got to have someone kind of leading it. We've got to have someone there all the time. We've got to have people that edit. It takes time to edit. We've got to have people that have camera work, and we've got to do the studio. Studio has a whole computerized lighting system in there that we've got to have somebody that knows how to do. What's a theater, volunteers to help us do. So we got, we have quite a bit of community support that are helping us. This helps us do that. And we can do this better with better equipment.
I can recall, maybe, us discussing this once a year. I'll be honest with you. I might be making that up, but I don't ever remember us sitting down talking about specifics about what we really want from the channel, like we're doing today. I mean, if there's something we really want, we should write it down and see if they can give it. But I, I don't remember us talking in detail like this about our desires.
The challenge we have is you have to be a technical person, you have to be a creative person, you have to be a journalism-type person, and you have to be a nonprofit manager. So it takes four different kinds of skills to do that. And we've assembled a team that I think kind of does that. We also are supposed to have someone from the city commission serving on our board as an advisory board member. We've only had one person that's ever attended from the city commission periodically, and that could have helped that communication. I agree with you, Dr. Davis. We haven't been here but once or twice. As I can recall, usually when we have the contracts that are up for renewal, that we go through this, and we should be doing it more often. But it's such a minor thing in a lot of ways, that there are bigger issues, like the sports thing and what have you, that, you know, we want to spend our time with the things that are the bigger issues. And this is a minor thing, but it has a pretty big impact. Because a community without a television station is not the kind of community Salina wants to be. I think having our, we, we need to be Salina's TV, and we can do that. We're just doing it on such a shoestring budget right now, with pretty good results, but we could step it up a little bit. And we need your help.
For what's worth, my recollection matches yours. I don't recall us having this level of conversation in a city commission session that I, to my memory. The contract calls for annual reporting, and so there is an annual written report that I think was shared with you this year, and I think was probably shared with you in years past. But there's, I'm not aware of any required reporting that the agreement calls out. It's, it kind of is the same information year, year after year, in terms of activities that occurred and what the plan is going forward. But that still, I don't think, has resulted in this level of conversation previously.
Greg, if we were going, if we were going to make an investment in equipment on our end, and I'm assuming by that, you know, you're talking about the control booth equipment there, what would be, what would we be looking at in terms of equipment cost to upgrade it to get us to the quality that we, that we'd like to see?
You know, I think your audio is not that bad. I just think it needs to be worked on and adjusted.
Okay.
I mean, what, what I've learned in talking to the major vendors for media, and there's two major ones, and they do most of the stuff over there, but there's another one that we've talked to that could do stuff here. But there's some duplication, because they do a lot of the agenda stuff here, and we could do it over there. How can we not buy equipment that does things in both shops? So that's something we've got to kind of work for. Most of them say, do your audio locally, for the most part. The cameras, these aren't that bad, really, except they're analog, and we have to go to digital. So they now have these little digital ones, and they're $3,000 to $4,000 each. And you can buy them from a vendor in Kansas City, or you can buy them from a vendor like you're shopping around. And so that would be a choice. And then the equipment back here, it depends on what we do and how we talk to each other across the street.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea of the investment that we would need to, to make in our equipment. And then also, the investment that you'd.
I'd say 25,000 to 35,000.
Okay.
And over there, 40, 35,000 to 45,000. And we can do that. We've saved up, we've been pretty fiscally responsible. Some of us are over there working for no fees, and so we've got, we've got enough to do it over there. This over here, who knows? But we have two different vendors identified over there, and we haven't had enough time to kind of think through which one we like the best. And we're going to do it probably, pretty soon.
I certainly don't claim to be any expert on this. I was surprised when I compared the video quality of what's on YouTube to what goes out on the website. It may not be as high-definition as it could be, but I think the YouTube video quality's pretty acceptable, with the exception of picking up the screen clearly, which may be a function of taking that feed directly, rather than pointing a camera at the screen. So the, what limited conversations I've had with, with Cox, they were pretty clear that the HD programming is not a precedent they want to set nationwide across their system. But they did feel like there might be an opportunity to provide a different, in a different format, and now I'm in over my head, but in some different format to get that video quality improved short of HD quality.
Let me answer the video quality problem, because a lot of people are confused. There's the SD/HD, and Mike's right. Cox is not willing to go to HD. Some providers are doing that. Some of the cable companies are doing it. Cox is one of the big ones, and if they do it here, it's going to impact Atlanta and all the other places where they're at. So they're going to be slow here. The problem we're having here is not that so much. It's the vendor that we access is, Salina Media Connection is using. We're using Earth Channel. And a decision was made a few years ago to save money and go with, since we're doing SD, go with a lower-quality kind of picture, because it was, if you look at it on a small screen, it's okay, but when you blow it up, it's not. We could spend more money and get the same kind of quality as YouTube's doing. But we don't, right now, we may not stay with that vendor, and they would lock us into a contract that would require us to stay with them, and they may not be the preferred vendor, just to get that quality till, for a couple more months, two or three more months. So we need to change that quality. I'm, I agree with all of you that that pixelated Earth Channel HD is no good. But it's, it can be fixed, and it's a different issue than the other issue. Does that make sense? The other issue, we're just going to have to live with it until that changes. It's not that bad of a deal.
Any more questions for Mr. Stevens?
I think I see. Please come forward.
Nancy Klostermeyer, 660 South Santa Fe. I'm new on the Access Board, Salina Media Connection, sorry, and I have to say I'm really excited about the opportunities I'm seeing and the vision that they have. And I want to just address the, the generational change here, because YouTube is something that is not really accessible to a lot of the older people in our community, and that's where I see a lot of the viewership that is really valuable for those individuals, and a lot of educational possibilities that we can reach out. I also serve on the area agency on aging board, and I'm seeing a lot of potential for health-related programming and exercise programming and things that can be made available to older people, and they were not going to be looking at YouTube. So we really need those channels available for them on their cable TV. Thank you.
Well, this is a question, I guess, for, for either Jacob or Mike. If we were to review other options, where would that fall in the, within the city? Who would take that, the lead on that?
As of a month ago, I had somebody in my suite that would be the perfect person to delegate that to, being the deputy city manager. Most likely a combination of Jacob, myself, and I think Rachel Hind in our office can be helpful as well.
Because at, at this point, in my mind, there's still some issues, and, and I would be for term, not, because we have to, I say we don't have to, but to, to be able to, to review other options, I believe we need to terminate the contract. And I'd kind of direct staff to review an alternate service provider, a new SMC contract or an in-house management. I mean, I don't, I like all those options. I don't know which is the best without staff reviewing that. And I hate to put that burden on staff, but.
Technically, not any of the contract.
No, that's what I'm saying. And also look at, at, you know.
I, I agree with that position, that if we terminate the contract, then we've got six months to figure out our other options. And I think, as I said before, or at least from my question, and you could probably tell, I think the public deserves the quality that we're, we've pretty much outlined in our study session prior, that the subtitling, the different language, the better quality, and that we need to discuss with our other partners, the other people that use that service. And to me, that's a library or cataloging function, and then the educational portion is another one. I'd like to discuss more with Salina Media Connection, whether they could take that up. I wouldn't be in favor of giving away a channel, but they could be, one could be a place where people can go to get a review of the meetings that we have, and also study sessions. If you just wanted to call up a study session on a topic and be able to review it, I think that'd be very valuable. And then there's going to be an educational and, and entertainment portion on the other side.
I think I would, for the next 90 days, try to work this out exclusively with Salina Media Connection. If we're going to get a outside service to televise the meetings, I doubt that's going to take 90, more than 90 days to set up. But if I was applying for an executive director's job here, I'd certainly be scared off by the fact that, whoa, you guys may not even be in business in a month. And when you listen to the things we're asking for, that we've never really asked specifically in this detail before, I think they deserve at least a couple of months of exclusive time to try to come up with a solution. It's not going to hurt, I mean, they're going to be with us until December 31st, anyway.
But what happens to that July 1st deadline if we don't?
That's just to let them know that we're not going to automatically renew this contract come July, I mean, January 1st. So this is just their six-month advance notice. The contract, the way it is now, is not palatable to us, and we're going to do something different. It may be renewed with you guys, but, so they can plan, rather than let them know November 15th, oh, you know what, 45 days, you guys are gone. But we, we have six months. That's a bad example, but kind of like working with those one-year extensions with the county, you know? They still have a contract. They're still there, but we're working to improve it. I think 27 years, at least give them 90 days, exclusive negotiation. We may find that a lot of this can be fixed.
Well, and I completely understand your point. The one concern I have is if we, if that leaves us 90 additional days to, you know, pull everything together if we're going to go a different direction, that's probably a little tight for staff. And you could do the same approach by, we could come up with some alternate contract extension that's short of the end of next year. We could, if you, if you, as a governing body, by consensus, are inclined to create some block of time for Salina Media Connection to try to respond to the expectations, you can set that out, and then we could reset a, you know, contract expiration date.
Yeah, Mr. Wood could certainly, you know, look around to see what's out there. But I think our public posture would be, we're trying to see what we can resurrect and salvage from what we have already. Because I think this is one of those community assets that you really can't put a dollar figure on once you, once you've lost it. It's gone.
If I understand what you're saying, you know, 90 days in, so August, September, October, if the expectation is we revisit with Salina Media Connection, what, where they're at, what they've been able to accomplish, we could certainly do that. But if you also want us to be prepared with a Plan B by the end of the year, I don't think we're going to be able to wait to initiate the rest of that investigation until that day.
Well, they all say, you know, walk lightly, carry a big stick. I mean, you can always, and should always be, looking at options.
Sure. So if I, if I'm, you know, kind of trying to summarize correctly, continue to pursue those options, but identify a point in time where we're going to revisit with Salina Media Connection, their performance and where they might stand in terms of the expectations.
And not just their performance, I mean, because we have to let them know what we need. I mean, if it's obvious 90, or even 60 days in, gosh, these guys just don't get it, we're making no progress, you know, we have our answer. But I don't think that's their attitude, but.
Frankly, I think my concern is not so much they don't get it, but is, can they, can they move that quickly in, in 90 days? And some of it's going to be an equipment investment, and do you make the investment if you don't know where you're staying?
And that's the, that's the thing. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, go ahead, no.
I, I feel like that's just like the crucial piece that, that we're missing, is what's, you know, what's it going to cost for us to get the quality that we want, investing in? What kind of an, an equipment investment are we going to have to, to make to get that? And then I do just want to say that, as we talk about Swag It, they, Overland Park contracted with them, dropped the contract because they were going to be a lot more expensive than what they'd anticipated, and then they resumed kind of a bare-bones contract. So, I mean, I think we just need to be mindful of, you know, just delegating it to a third party doesn't mean we aren't going to have to. party doesn't mean we aren't gonna have to, to think about it again and keep an eye on that. And it might even be, you know, a lot more expensive than what we're, than what we're doing now. But, you know, if our goal is to up the quality and the timeliness of, you know, of the posting, I think we need, we need more information about what we're gonna need to invest.
Although that is just one part of access's mission. And it's, and probably technically the one that requires the least, in a way, amount of skill, because you, I mean, it's the individual programming, just, I mean, who knows what else those channels can be used for? I mean, we could set up exercise classes, you know, when we have to do our education for, for recycling and composting, whatever. I have a lot of, and maybe my patients represent an older demographic of which the government says I'm officially part of now, since I have my red, white, and blue card, but my folks watch these meetings on TV. Rarely do they come in and tell me what they saw on Facebook. I'm a little challenged to get on Facebook unless it comes to me, then I just push the button that says, "See more," but it's a valuable service.
We're comfortable with option two. We like option one a little better. We're prepared to buy new equipment, but we don't wanna buy new equipment and then find that we're not gonna be able to utilize it in the way possible. We want to and we need to buy new equipment over there. If we buy new equipment, we hope that we have good faith in our negotiation because to drop the contract and then to negotiate without a contract kind of ties one hand behind our back and we need to buy new equipment. So, should we buy new equipment? That'll give you a chance to kinda see a little more about what we can do, although you have this over here.
Well, we're kinda tying your other hand behind your back too, because you're trying to hire an executive director and we're not giving you a commitment and I apologize for that, but that's kinda where we're at and the lack of a executive director probably is some of our concern also, you know?
Well, we have a really good candidate and I hope you have, we think, I hope everything turns out. This is, this week is really important to us in terms of having a candidate come and look at, because we have an opportunity to hire somebody with a lot of passion that has more than I have. So, that's who we need to get, is somebody better than what we've had. So, Mike, I, you're right, I understand your situation.
And I have nothing against Seline Media Connection and Mayor Davis maybe hit, you know, hit the nail on the head when he said, "We haven't really given you a good direction." You know, there, we could be at fault also for, for, you know, for what we're seeing and I guess, I know Mayor Davis has a little bit of a passion for this and would like to see us, you know, negotiate with you guys and, and I guess we need to find out if you can do some of the things that we want done, whether it's closed captioned or span, you know, subtitles or whatever we're doing. So, I think we need to be a little clearer and that you can say, "Yes, we can do that and that's what it would take," I guess, so...
One question may help a little on readiness. On these options, when it says negotiate a new agreement, what, what was your expectation of the timeline? Are we talking within thirty, obviously you don't wanna wait till the 175th day, but...
Right. Well, we, we're gonna try to have it in place before year-end. I mean, I think the option number two is it's currently where it presumes we're working towards a renewal for the next calendar year rather than some short-term duration. Obviously, you don't wanna get down to December 30th, but...
Right, because, can we put a shorter...
Sure.
Nothing like a deadline to get people to work.
Right, right.
Well, I think if they're gonna hire a new director, they're gonna want time for that person to ramp them up, be able to prove themselves to us, so I think if number two's acceptable, then we've got till the end of the year to see if the progress is inspiring us or not.
There's always the possibility that the negotiations break down, but if you said option two is the direction you wanna go, I think as staff, we'd try to be coming back to you in three months with kind of a proposed agreement in hopes that it's either acceptable or we have enough time to react to whatever difficulties there might be and still get it wrapped up by year-end.
I think the one area of concern is captioning and Spanish translation. In captioning, there's possibilities, but it's how much we wanna spend. Are you willing to increase your fees on a regular basis to cover the increased cost of captioning? And Spanish translation is trickier because we have different kinds of Spanish versions and a lot of the cable access providers I've talked to, they aren't quite into Spanish translations. They just hire somebody in the meetings to do translating if it's needed. So, we'll be way out on the cutting edge, the bleeding edge on that area and I'm all for, I'm a one-Seline guy, I'm all for that inclusion. It's gonna be very expensive probably. That's where we get the costs that Jacob's talking about from Swag It, is their cost for that. So, I hope that wouldn't be, I hope we'd have some flexibility in that regard and we wouldn't be stuck on unrealistic expectations on both sides. So, if that sounds fair.
To your point, I think hopefully in three months, we can quantify how much that costs and, you know, what, what the difficulties are, what the decision points are and then you can, we can collectively make a value decision about that particular item.
Because I would think the cost ought to be something, I would think it wouldn't take ninety days to figure that out.
And then I have to defer to Greg in terms of, I know what some of the outside providers have said, they, it's kind of streamlined and here's the fee. If you have to go buy your own equipment, I'd have to defer to Greg in terms of how that, what that might look like.
We'd be glad to mutually explore it in the next four or five months.
Two to three months?
In good faith.
And the reason I say two to three months, I mean, as much as I wanna keep some version of what we have, but on a higher level, I can't afford us to be, you know, naked without anybody in a booth somewhere come January 1st.
Two to three months sounds fair, but...
I mean, there's certainly enough time to tell if, if we're making progress or if we're gonna make progress.
Yeah.
I'm not supposed to initiate the motion, so it's on...
Mr. Mayor, I move we provide notice of termination of the current contract by July 1st and direct staff to negotiate a new agreement with Seline Media Connection.
Second.
Mayor, if I may, just a quick point of clarification is, based upon that motion, am I correct that that is your only option then, to negotiate the contract, a new contract?
Yes, although...
Not consider any other options between now and the end of the year?
If you think that I need to add that to the, to the motion, yes, I think we, we covered that earlier, there needs to be a blending here, but I would add to the motion that and direct staff to seek out alternative service options, so that'd be appropriate language.
Well, it's just to be sure that any option that you anticipate would be ultimately pursued between now and the end of the year. I think you want to be sure that is included in the motion, because it is certainly correct.
I just wanna be sure we keep all of our options on the table and if you're saying that we're excluding the idea of looking at other service providers and options even doing it in-house, I wouldn't want to say we're excluding ourselves from that. I'd include that in the motion, so those all of those possibilities could be considered.
Second.
And second.
Is that okay with you?
But...
Get the city clerk to maybe...
Can we reread the motion?
Reread it just so that we know exactly what we're voting on.
Okay, so if I caught that correctly, it was to provide notice of termination of the current contract by July 1st and direct staff to negotiate a new agreement with Seline Media Connection and direct staff to seek alternative service providers and to direct staff to review in-house management of some or all services?
Yes.
Okay.
Rather than say seek out alternative service providers to review alternate service providers, just so...
In-house would be one of those alternatives, technically.
Yeah, well, yeah, she listed that, but seek makes it seem like we wanna enter into a contract. What I think you're asking us to do is negotiate with Seline Media Connection and review other alternatives.
Yes. Just had that look on your face I've seen before.
Well, I just, I waited, I wanted to see, make sure that there was a motion made, because I certainly wasn't trying to influence where you went on the matter. I just was concerned if we speak strictly in terms of, or if we direct the renegotiation exclusively, I think we've clarified now that that's not the intent.
Right.
I didn't know if we were stepping away from any sort of sequencing. I'm principally now concerned, now that I know that we're not just focusing strictly on the renegotiation, but instead wanting to consider options available to you, I think it becomes probably most important that staff feels like they have the direction they need in terms of the sequencing and how they look at this.
If you wanna formalize it by way of motion, it certainly would be more clear, but my intent would be ninety days out to be able to report back to you the status of our renegotiation with Seline Media Connection, to see if we're making sufficient progress or whether we need to look at those other alternatives in earnest. So, I think, I think that leaves staff kinda simultaneously, at least pursuing renegotiation, investigating alternatives in anticipation of we might have to go there by year-end, depending on how the negotiation goes with Seline Media Connection, all with the intent of coming back to you in ninety days with a status report on the negotiations with Seline Media Connection. If you wanna formalize that by way of motion, you're certainly welcome to do that.
That sounds good.
You have my commitment that that's how we would approach it.
Thank you. Your word is good. Yeah, I don't think I'm articulate enough to wrap that up long what you just said. So, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five, nothing. Thanks for the spirited conversation. We now have...
Mayor, can we take a quick break?
We don't have to be that quick, how long?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
All right. Recession for five minutes.
Okay. I can't get up.
...made outside the boundaries of Stone Lake to allow this to develop. The city did extend a water and sanitary sewer line south of Schilling Road to serve the County Expo Center site, which is on the east side of Ohio, south of Schilling Road. The applicants have indicated that they plan to charge $20,000 to $35,000 per lot, for interior lots, based on the size of the lot. And they're also planning to build and sell homes in the $160,000 to $250,000 price range. A recent check with the multiple list service indicates that there are currently 61 homes on the market in that price range. And there are 25 homes in the $250,000 to $300,000 price range. I think the applicants would be the best to indicate to you what they project, the rate at which houses will be purchased or leased, based on their own experience with the current market. Again, there's, we can't identify any innovative housing projects, but there is a plan for multifamily housing in this subdivision, which does not exist in most of the other subdivisions you've considered recently. Based on the engineer's estimate, we're looking at Phase One, nearly $30,000 per lot, $30,000 per lot in B, and $41,000 per lot in C. We've looked at the average five-year running total for specials. The five-year average is influenced by the fact that we've done some 75% and 80% financing, which drives those numbers down. But if we exclude that, the average assessment per lot has been $30,000 to $34,000 per residential lot. So in A and B, they're pretty much in line with that. C is the costs are higher, but there are commercial lots there and some multifamily, and so those are not as easy to compare. We haven't identified any issues that would make any of these lots not developable. As to bicycle, pedestrian, roadway access, they have a connection, physical connection to Ohio Street versus Shoreline Drive. Crystal Place will provide a future street connection to Ohio that is right here, and so there'd be two street connections to Ohio. There is a, not on this drawing, a future emergency access road connected to Schilling Road that would be over in this location. And then there would be a fourth means of access, right in this location, where there is a easement for emergency vehicle access and a future hike bike trail connection with Lakeview Estates to the north. You should have at your places some background information about how emergency vehicle access to Stone Lake was taken into account. As far as price points, again, we're looking at $160,000 to $250,000 price range, according to the applicant. And as far as the impact on debt and debt management, the city is currently at 43% of its debt limit. And taking into account the whole $4 million in improvements for the entire 3A, B, and C, the Director of Finance indicated that that would increase us to 45% of our debt capacity. We provided a summary of the available residential building lots. I would caveat that by the fact that it changes daily. And we have seven pending permits that have been just submitted this week. And so as soon as we print a number and put it in a report, it lowers. So one thing I will say is that when we came to you in January, we reported that the multi-list had 91 vacant buildable lots in the city. That number is now reduced to 67. And the number that are available, meaning those not within River Run or Highland Meadows Hamlet, is down to 29 lots available that are buildable at this time. Just to give you an example, the special assessment financing for River Trail Second Edition was approved in 2017, and they started out with 42 lots. There's now 15 left and three more permits on my desk, which would take that down to We've summarized for you on page 15, the subdivisions we have in the pipeline, Pheasant Ridge Number Three, Magnolia Hills, Edition Number Two, Wheatland Valley, Stone Lake Edition Phase Two. None of those are in the buildable stage. And so we are probably close to historic lows in terms of the number of vacant buildable lots on which a home builder or home buyer could purchase for construction. We've summarized in the fiscal note that the city, we have made adjustments to it, but the fundamental special assessment policy that we're operating under was adopted in 1989. That was done in response to some defaults or foreclosures on subdivision that had occurred in the mid-'80s. But since that policy's been in effect, there have been no major special assessments, delinquencies in which developers have failed to pay their special assessments. So again, this is a two-step process. This is step one. This step is designed to give you the opportunity to review the proposed development, the proposed housing price points, projected specials, and get an update on current housing market conditions, so that you can accurately assess the likelihood of this proposal's success. Your options would be to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report for all of Phase One, or Three of Stone Lake, that is all the purple or magenta, the lime green and the blue areas. You could authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report for Phase 3A only. You could postpone consideration of this item. If there's additional information you think we need to provide for you to act on this request, or you could vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparation of an engineering feasibility report at this time. This is a discretionary action on your part. I did make a few other notes to myself, just to have at the ready here, but the, in 2018, the City of Salina issued 27 permits for new home construction. That is the lowest number of new homes constructed in Salina since we have building permit records for the city. The previous low was 40 in 1982. As of this year, we have issued 21 new home permits between January and the first part of June. So we're on pace to perhaps equal that number before June is out. But with 29 vacant buildable lots in this price range, I think the builders are probably going to run out of lots before they can reach a doubling of last year's numbers. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about items in the report. We do have the representatives of Stone Lake Development LLC here, if you have questions of them.
Well, start at this end.
All right. Sorry, just a second here. I have some questions regarding the assumptions for how the project breaks even. And I guess my first question is, these assumptions, these projections are based upon 100% of the lots built out, correct? And 100% of the lots having utility accounts, is that correct?
Over 30 years and over 60 years, yes.
But it assumes it's starting at year one?
No.
It does not? So what rate of fill is it?
The assumptions that, the information that we provided was, we projected a 30-year useful life for the pavement and the maintenance involved in that. So what we were doing was comparing the costs that the city would incur over that 30-year life period and comparing that with the revenue that would be collected over 30 years.
And I think that my question speaks specifically to the revenue assumption. So did you assume that 100% of the lots would be built out on year one? Or does that assume that there's a certain percentage of ag valuation in there?
There is not a sliding scale there based on year one through five. It says five through 10, it's that.
It's, I'm sorry, there is or there?
There is not.
There is not, okay. So what I said in my previous statement, in that there's an assumption of 100% for generating revenue, there's an assumption of 100% homes, built homes on those sites having utility accounts was correct?
Yes, but what is also not taken into account is, we did not do projected increases in valuation, and we did not, we have another number that we did not include in the report that was the value of estimated future property tax over 30 years, assuming a percentage increase in the mill levy. And so both of those numbers would be quite a bit higher than that if we took into account increases in valuation and increases in mill levy. So they're based on a static period, based on our current mill levy and based on current valuations.
Okay. And I had some questions about, on page 14 and page 15, there's some, a list of the residential subdivisions that contain vacant buildable lots with infrastructure in place. And I was wondering, and I realize I'm asking you this off the top of your head, although I think maybe I did email it at some point to City Manager Mike Skreg. Highland Meadows Hamlet, what was the, how many lots were initially in that development?
Well, there's, there's two phases. There's Highland Meadows Hamlet and there's Highland Meadows Hamlet Woodlands. And I would, I would have to, I can get it in pretty short order. I have it in my office, but I don't have it here. But there were a substantial number of lots in the first phase, and there is something on the order of 18 to 20 lots in Highland Meadows Hamlet Woodlands, which is at the south end.
Okay. And in terms of Briargate, I'm just going to move down the list, Briargate Edition, do we have any sense of how many lots were available in that subdivision?
There were about 20.
Okay. River Run Edition, how many were in that development?
I can run upstairs and get my chart. I have this for every subdivision in the community, but I don't have it at my place here.
Okay. Well, I don't know that my, that's necessary, but I think what my, my point would be that we have developments going back as far as 1995 and 2000, 2003, 2004, 2009, that still have lots that are available to build upon, from my interpretation of, of the data that we were provided.
Well, the Briargate was 100% served by infrastructure from day one, and the first phase of River Run primarily. Cedar Ridge, there are more lots in Cedar Ridge that currently do not have streets and water and sewer than there are that do. And with Grand Prairie, there's a whole nother phase that does not have streets, water, or sewer yet. But the listing of lots here from the multi-list are lots that are buildable. There are subdivisions that have paper lots that aren't buildable, and they are not included in our account because no one can pull a permit on those lots.
But it's, it's, it's correct to say that of the 29 buildable lots that we have, some of them are in subdivisions that have been developing for 15 years?
Or longer. River Trail dates from 1998, but the infrastructure wasn't put in until 2017. So that's, that's all we can go off of, is when the infrastructure is put in that makes them buildable.
I have a question. You gave us figures of, from 2018, about 27 residential building permits being issued. Do you have figures from 2016 or 2017?
Yes.
Okay.
We issued 50 building permits in 2017, and we issued 43 in 2016.
Okay. So I just want to make sure my math is correct. We have 29 buildable lots. We recently approved 62 lots. They're not, I understand they're waiting to have infrastructure put in place, but we have 62 more lots in the pipeline, which gives us 91. And with this, and we have approximately 86 homes in the price range for sale, so that would bring us to a total, we'd have 91 lots available and approximately 177 different property options for people who either wish to buy existing homes or who wanted to build.
All right. What we attempted to do was, we broke the 67 vacant buildable lots into two categories. Category one was River Run and Highland Meadows Hamlet, which are at price points that typical home buyer or those desiring to build homes cannot afford. Therefore, those lots are absorbed more slowly. The other 29 lots are in Grand Prairie, River Trail, and the one remaining lot in Briargate, which is not, it's deemed to be not a very attractive lot, which is why it's remained vacant all these years.
So, okay, so the 29 at the comparable price point, and the 62 that we recently approved, and the 86 homes on the market gets us to 177. So do we make an assumption, any kind of assumption, on population growth, population trends?
I guess I would add, just think about it, you need one employer to come to town with 200 employees, and we're out of houses. I mean, the, the housing stock we have, it, I mean, no, typically a community doesn't even get down to this granular level of going 87 to 85. I mean, this is a very, very tight stock. And, I mean, just last week alone, six new permits. I mean, it would just take a couple of those to fall over to, to be able to accommodate some of those changes in population. So I know those, those numbers can seem really large, but actually, when it's this tight, it just takes a few to, to make that market really tight. And when we start to talk about affordability, the smaller the stock gets, the more affordability issues we have.
Right. And it kind of goes to some of the assumptions that staff has made in putting this together, because what we've relied upon is we've relied upon existing numbers that we have for streets, correct? I mean, we, we take what we've budgeted and we, we figure it out, and then, and then we apply that multiplier, and that's how we get that number. But what that fails to take into consideration is we have operated under a policy and a plan and, and, and practical action of deferred maintenance for so many years, that basically that's, that's cooked into this, this formula. That's, that's assuming deferred maintenance already in this. And in terms of, you know, the reason I ask about population growth is because if we take a look at the last five years, we are seeing population decline. And the projections are for populat, the population to age. And is this the kind of housing stock that our, that our aging population is going to be best served by? And I think that, that's, that's my point, you know, with asking about some of the assumptions, because I think that, you know, I, I, well, I appreciate the fact that, that staff has assembled all of this material, because it at least afforded me a little bit better opportunity to make a data-driven decision. I just, you know, when we have 91 lots available, and it looks like, you know, 50, you know, 27, 21, I mean, I don't know. I, that's just me. That's not a question I don't expect you to respond to. Thank you.
Just, we don't have, there's not a one-to-one direct correlation between residential building permits and population growth. But between 1980 and 1990, the city's population did grow, and we averaged issuing 66 building permits a year. In the 1990s, the city's population also grew, and we averaged issuing 93 building permits a year. In the 2000s, we grew from 44,000 in 2000 to 47,000 in 2010. And during that period, we averaged issuing 80 building permits a year. In the decade of the 2010s, we don't know what the 2020 population will be, but our average is down to less, little under 50 building permits a year. So that, that is a comparison by decade. But in the 1990s and the 2000s, and the decade between 2000 and 2010, the, the community did grow, and the number of building permits issued annually was at a higher rate than what we're seeing right now.
Right. And I wish, I, I know I have it somewhere here in my budget book, but yeah, we can, I mean, we can take a look at those American Communities surveys from 2015 to present, because it is, it is what it is. So if we need to, you know, take a look at that, I'm sure I can get that information. I thought I actually had it in my budget book, but that's all I have for the time being. I'll look for that information.
Yeah, I guess I'm not going to, you know, argue population numbers, because I don't have those. The state, I know, has put some estimates out there. As I've stated before, I'm not sure if our demographics have changed and we have fewer individuals per household. I'm not sure what it is. But I can tell you, 40 years of being in the business, that I have not seen our housing stock this low. So if our population's decreasing, I'm not sure why our, our housing stock is so low. And, and I agree with Mr. Andrews, the fact that we have a supply and demand problem, and, and we probably have some people buying properties right now at, at inflated prices because of that. Also, as I, as I, we talk about affordable housing, and again, as I've stated before, affordable's different to every, everybody. But as I drive around neighborhoods that have homes this, in this price range, whether it's Quell Meadows, or it's the Wildcat Edition, or River Trail, I see a lot of young families there, and I see bicycles, and I see kids in those. And again, these are homes that those families are buying, and, and I believe that if we want to continue to, to draw those families, we need to continue to have homes in this price range.
I thought we were in the questioning space, stage, but I'll hold my comments until I hear from the applicants.
Okay. I have three questions, and, you know, the first one, you can probably answer, Mr. Andrew, is, right now, there's just one road end, is the Crystal, that's too small, Crystal Place, is that going to be connected with the, that would not be connected with the next phase of?
Could you put that aerial photo up, John? It's not proposed to be connected till Phase 3C. This is, this is Stone Lake. This is Crystal Place here. This is, this is the preliminary plat that was approved, which has an emergency access here on Schilling Road. And then this is the north access. I've had some discussions with the new owner. Do you have that blow up, John, that we could put up there, please? This is at the north end of the subdivision, and the representative for the original developer, we were simply unable to persuade him of the benefits of making that a physical street connection to the north. So what we got was half a loaf, and what that is, is common area, and it's a pedestrian utility and access easement. And I have talked to the current new owners and have had long conversations with Mr. Biquist, who owns the property to the north. We honestly thought that by this point in time, that the property to the north would actually be platted and under some development. But the, the ultimate goal would be to convert this strip into a street and have a physical street connection with the subdivision to the north. We can't do that at this time, because there's no plat, there's no street to connect it to. But long-term, that would be the preferred solution, would be to take this 60-foot strip, which happens to equal the width of a right-of-way and make a physical street connection up to the subdivision to the north.
My concern would be if you needed emergency access, is the, the, the land going east-west, is that, I mean, if it rained like this, is that dirt going to hold a fire truck?
No. It would have to be approved to hold the weight of a $75,000, $75,000 pound fire truck.
So that would be done with 3A?
It could be done as part of Phase Two. It was discussed as part of Phase Two, that area to the northeast. Again, that, that benefit district has not come back before you, but as we reported before, if and when it does, you could condition that benefit district on the emergency access being installed at that time.
Because we had the same discussion with the first part of the development here, that with just one road end, and I forget how many feet it was, 1,000 feet or something, that there was no second way in or out, as far as emergency vehicles?
Presently, the only part that's developed is this Phase One, and the fire marshal determined that there was no need for a second way in and out for Phase One, but that when this development got beyond that point, that would be the time to be looking at getting a second. I mean, it's not that the means is not available, it's that it's not improved.
Which means to a 75,000 pound truck, it's not available.
Correct.
So this is, that point that the fire marshal was talking about then, that now?
Depending on which one came first, it would probably more, make more sense to make it part of the benefit district for this phase, since this is more directly involved with that. But that could be part of the benefit district for Phase Two. It's probably less, the concern by the commission at that time was- It's probably less, the concern by the commission at that time was that this was moving away from Ohio, whereas these properties here are more accessible from Ohio. But the idea is that if this were unavailable, that there's a second way in for the fire department.
All right, but that's what I'm concerned about, if, at Stone, I gotta memorize, too many, Shoreline Drive. If that's unavailable near Ohio, then there's no way in or out, right now?
That is correct, right now, yes.
So depending on which phase comes first, we have the opportunity to take advantage of the dedicated access and improve the private drive in such a way that it can carry the fire truck traffic in an emergency situation. We just need to be prepared to require that as we process whichever one comes first.
So for example, on Pheasant Ridge, number three, part of the actual benefit district that this commission approved, involve the construction of a rock emergency access road that went from the edge of the subdivision over to Holmes Road. And it's not a city street, it's a fire access road.
Right, I'm just, and John, I hope you don't mind me including in my analogy, but as reckless as it might look to build in a floodway, I'm just a little nervous that there's one way in, one way out to a lot of homes here with...
Well, if you, if you do a driving tour of Salina, and you go to Highland Meadows Hamlet, there's only one way for a visitor to go into Highland Meadows Hamlet. And that's the one entrance on Magnolia. If you go to River Run, there's only one way to get into that subdivision, which is from South Marymount Road. If you go to Grand Prairie, there's only one way to get into that subdivision, and that is from Cedar Ridge Drive. So this particular subdivision actually has more, has the potential for more access points into it than those subdivisions do that are already existing and heavily developed.
Granted, I just don't like to wait for catastrophes to occur before the minimum code is improved. And those all other developments so far have not had that catastrophe, and hope they never do. But as far as forming the benefit district, if we know it's coming, and I would hope that 3B comes quickly on the heels of 3A and 3C behind it, I'd like to see all those provisions.
So Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the preparations are in place to provide a second emergency access point with the next phase of development?
Correct. And I think the, and we've tried really hard in this report to keep emphasizing that benefit district process that we've created is a two-step process. And the reason that staff is not focusing on the details of emergency access and things like that is that this is just a discussion to determine the mode of financing for the infrastructure. But the expectation is that when the benefit district and all the improvement plans for Phase 2 comes back to you, if you wish, as a requirement, to create a benefit district for these lots, to require that this emergency access route be constructed as part of that benefit district, you have the authority to do that. And that is Phase 2. We're talking about Phases 3A, B, and C. So we were envisioning happening before this comes forward, because this is Phase 3. And this is in line behind Phase 2.
Think on that, because if the whole, so you would only include Phase 2 in the benefit district for that extension of West Stone Drive, is that the one in green? Yeah. That would go out to the access road?
If, if there was, I mean, part of that will be looking, we're getting input from the city's bond council and from others, is about what that boundary should be. But if we're looking at what physical improvements would be made as part of, if this becomes a benefit district, then it's gonna be the extension of this street, and it's gonna be water and sewer lines. And if you say so, it would be the construction of an all-weather surface here and a connection out back to Ohio to allow emergency access in as part of Phase 2. Whether that cost would be assessed just to these lots, or our city's bond council says, no, it's gonna benefit these lots as well, that would be determined when the benefit district is actually formed.
And Dean, just to clarify, that would be coming up, because they, we are gone through step one, so the feasibility analysis is being calculated, and that would come back?
Yes, that would come back as an action item. Again, all of these, every single one of these, and in this case, it's probably gonna come back as three separate action items. But the reason we tried to lay those out for you is that of all the ones that we've considered, only one of these has actually come back to you to form an actual benefit district. And that's Pheasant Ridge, number three, where there is an actual benefit district formed, and the construction bids have been approved, and construction's underway. As part of that construction, there will be a fire access road that connects that subdivision over to Holmes Road. If we replicated that same process with Stone Lake, Phase 2, that would come back to you. And conceivably, this fire access road would be part of the improvements for Phase 2. We just haven't gotten that far yet, because it hasn't come back to you for any action.
And for anybody listening at home, this gets really confusing between phases and steps. So we should clarify, steps one and two, when we're talking about this approval process, right now, we're doing step one. Can we go forward and do feasibility? So Section 2 up there on the map has gone through step one, and is having feasibility and those components, but it has not come back for step two, where you have given that permission. And that's where Dean's talking about, that you can require that that access road be added. That would likely get done before what we're talking about today. And that's step one, to assess 3A, 3B, and 3C. So just if somebody's listening at home, trying to kind of keep track of these, it can get a little confusing. And so that would be step one. And then when we came back for step two, that would be finalizing for those three.
And my only concern is safety standpoint, because there's no connectivity there. There's nothing to the north to connect to. There's nothing to the south to connect to. And there's, right now, one way out, and that's to the west. Two other, with the, and may have been with this same district, or one of the recent developments we were considering, and I don't think we added it necessarily to our official list of considerations or factors in assessing these requests. But it dealt with lots being available to all builders. And my question would be, are the three owners now the only builders, plan to build, or are these lots available to be purchased to other builders? Because that was...
That is a question that is best addressed to them, since they are the new owners. I can only say that I, I'm aware of at least a half a dozen permits that I have reviewed from individuals who are not builders, who have built their own home in Stone Lake. And so, to my knowledge, the only subdivision in Salina that is exclusive to one builder is Cedar Ridge Edition on the south side of Cedar Ridge Drive, and that is exclusive to a single builder. All the remaining subdivisions in Salina, to the best of my knowledge, are open to all builders. They're also open to any individual who wants to build their own home.
All right. And one last one, it's a detail question. I apologize for not preparing you ahead of time. Do you, anyone know what part of our debt capacity is currently tied up with special assessments? And the reason I'm asking is, is we anticipate issuing further debt in the next couple of years.
Right.
Just something psychological about getting over that 50% capacity.
And I understand the point of your question. Historically, we've issued debt with multiple purposes or projects rolled together. I know Debbie has been working on trying to isolate the different purposes in special assessment debt, has been working with our bond council. In fact, I think she might have isolated that number. I just don't know it off the top of my head. In all honesty, I wanted to separate that out, so that we can kind of characterize what is special assessment, how much of it is special assessment debt. And depending on your viewpoint of special assessments, that may be viewed as a little bit more of a secured debt in terms of it ties back to the property, and if there's a default, the property goes for sale on the courthouse steps, and there's a process for that. But that's a long way to say, I know we're working on it, but I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Just like the CIP, is, you know, we know some of that debt rolls off every year.
Right.
And just here's where we are, as far as the special assessment debt rolling off.
Page 14 of the blue sheet does identify that this project would be a 2% increase.
Right. I'm just curious, how much of that 43% is also tied up?
That is all debt. That's the city's entire debt, not, not special assessment.
Right, I understand that.
Or bonded debt.
And I don't know if this is what he's discussing, but I see special assessment bonds, on this chart, we show 6.3 million, with a total combined debt of 157 million. Does that sound about right?
Well, my concern with that is, that's the League of Kansas municipalities' level of detail. And I think that may be a function of what we reported as special assessment debt. And when we grouped it together, that may not have got separated out in the Emma information that they relied on. So I, I'm not prepared to say that is completely accurate, given the way we financed in the past.
Mayor Davis, may I ask a follow-up question to one that you asked? So I guess you mentioned several subdivisions that have only one way in and one way out. So I noticed that, I think it, I think these were included in our pack at the Salina subdivision regulations that were adopted in 2016. It does note that the current edition of the International Fire Code limits residential development to 30 houses with only one way in and one way out. And I guess my question is, were those subdivisions were developed before, prior to 2016? Is that why they have the one in and one out exception granted to them?
That is correct. The fire code, that portion of the fire code was never adopted by the city before. That was addressed through the subdivision regulations and through Planning Commission Policy 04-1, which is what was applied to the review of subdivisions.
So I think we may have confused this conversation somehow. The phase that's on the ground, that was platted, built, lots sold, houses built, the fire marshal at the time reviewed that plat and related the requirements that you just cited. And I know there was conversation about a turnaround, not only one entrance point, but turnaround point. And typically, that's a cul-de-sac, but in this case, it's a, it's a hammerhead. And there was also discussion about the ability to turn in elsewhere. So right or wrong, some discretion was applied to approve the plat that exists today with one entrance point and the hammerhead turnaround. So when we talk about, and how many lots are, residential lots are in that phase, Dean?
34.
So it was two over the 32. I assume that's why the discretion was applied. With respect to future phasing, the intention is not to allow development of a second phase without a second entrance. The plans are in place to exit out the north end of the subdivision on an easement that's already dedicated, connect to an existing private drive that runs east and west back to Ohio. And the expectation would be that that be improved to carry the weight of a fire truck. So other than 34 compared to 32, or the approval that's already in place, I don't, I don't think we're proposing continued deviation from the code.
But the, the step that would occur to trigger that was two in the northeast corner?
Yeah, I may be oversimplifying it, but it would be development of the next phase. We assume that's two, but two's owned by a different developer than three. So we don't entirely know who's gonna, you know, finalize their project move forward first.
If 3A was to be moved forward before two, we could go ahead and address the north exit, emergency exit, correct?
Yes, you could, whichever one came to you first.
And would it, because it's gonna be a fairly minimal cost, would it be placed on Phase 2 or on Phase 3A?
What we would do is what we have to do every time when we're creating the boundaries of a benefit district. We would have to consult with our bound council, and they would advise us where they think the benefiting lot boundary would be.
Okay. So that answers my question, the fact that whether 2 or 3A comes first, we're gonna have to address the north entrance. Bond council will address, who gets to assess that? And it's not a, it's not gonna be a large number, so it's not gonna be anything that should be significant.
There are two issues associated with a one-way-in situation. One is the length of distance that the fire department has to travel before they can turn around and get back out. The other one is concern about a tornado and a house blowing off its foundation, or a tree falling down and blocking the entrance into the subdivision and having a second way in. What Mr. Scrag indicated and what the fire marshal took into account was that there is a point right here, where there's, this intersection has been widened, and there's an island where a fire truck can come in, and they can turn around right here and go right back out. And that's only a short distance from the entrance. And then there's another point here as well, where a fire truck can turn around and go back out. And so from that standpoint, having these two points added in that provided a place for emergency vehicles to come in, turn around, and get back out, so they wouldn't have to drive all the way to the end to get to a cul-de-sac to get out. I think the other thing that is just a fact of life in Salina is we have so many subdivisions that develop in phases. There is a time where almost every subdivision, whether it has multiple streets in or one street in, where there's gonna be a period of time where there's only one physical street connection to get in, and then you have to wait till the next phases to develop to get those, those connections made. So Quail Meadows Estates on the north side of Schilling Road, today, has two streets that connect with Schilling Road. But when they did their first phase over at the west end, they only had one street that connected to Schilling Road, because that's the phase that they did first. And so it's, it is not unusual at all for subdivisions in Salina, at least in their initial phase, even if they have a plat that has multiple streets, to have only one way in and out, to start with.
As long as we keep running, good luck, we're in business.
And then, I promised at the last meeting in January that I was gonna get this number so it can be entered into the record in the minutes. But in response to a question from Commissioner Hodges, and relating back to her questions about staff's projection on property tax, today, on if we had every lot in Stone Lake that just remained vacant, and we did all these improvements, and nothing got built on them, today, the city receives $98 a year in property tax on the vacant lots in Stone Lake. So that's the sum total of all the vacant lots in there today. The city gets $98 per year in property tax on those vacant lots.
I'm sorry, Dean. Thank you, and thank you for providing that. Per lot?
No, total.
$98?
Total, okay. Right. So if you, if you could go to the aerial photo or someplace, John, where we can look at. Right now, we have about 34 of the lots. It's much, it's almost completely filled in here now, and this is starting to fill in. But I'm referring to all these platted lots here that are vacant, all these down here that are vacant, these here along the lake that are currently vacant, and these over here. If I take the property tax on all those vacant lots, summed together for all the lots, we're getting $98 a year in property tax on those. So it's much more beneficial, from a property tax standpoint, to have a house on the lots than what we would get... than what we would get if it's an ag, considered to be an agricultural field.
Thank you. And conversely, it highlights the risk at the same time.
Right. Because we're not, we're not going to realize any property tax benefit by having vacant, platted lots that people are farming.
Thank you.
I guess I would like to add, though, if, you know, this is actually fairly new. I mean, we're barely a year into this new special assessment format and this two-step process and these types of staff reports. There's a huge amount of data that goes into here, and sometimes not always easy data to get. We are completely open to other additional data that needs to be added. These are based off of the exact criteria that's laid out in code. So if there's additional data that needs to be gathered, just knowing that in advance and what you're looking for is really helpful. And we try to keep them systematic so that subdivision by subdivision can be compared. So the same calculation was given. So if we need to, to add more data, just knowing that in advance, that's something the commission desires because it's completely up to discretionary. I mean, this isn't something staff gives a recommendation on. Our goal here is to bring you the best data possible for you guys to make the best decision.
And thank you. I appreciate that. I think that, I mean, I'm, I made my concerns in terms of the assumptions made with, with the data presented, and obviously, I don't speak for the whole commission, but that's, you know, in terms of making some assumptions about the rate, the sale rate, and I don't know if that comes from the developers', you know, business plan or pro forma or what. But I think that that would be, you know, something that was helpful if we didn't, you know, because Dean just really freaked me out here with the $98. Because now I'm looking at, all this infrastructure goes in, and we have those lots, and if they don't sell, we're going to have all, we're going to have miles of streets and sewers, and we're going to be getting $98 a year until houses are developed on them.
Right. So the flip side of your, your question was, are our assumptions about property tax revenue all based on the lots being built upon? Yes, they are, as, as we compare those to the maintenance costs for streets. And so at the last meeting in January, you asked what the consequence would be that if we put the improvements in and no houses were built.
Right.
That is my answer.
And thank you, I appreciate that.
That it's going to be less than $100 per year in property tax revenue to the city to offset those streets and utilities that aren't being utilized.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, you've earned your money today. Thank you.
Well, we do have applicants, so I'm sure would like to, if you're through with any technical questions, they may have some things that they would like to add.
Come on up.
Good evening, commissioners. Mayor, thanks for listening to us and staying late here. And thanks to Dean and everybody, they, they present a good, good show here for us. Stone Lake Developments, who I'm representing, it's myself, Todd Roberg, Craig Piercy. All of us are lifelong residents of Salina. We're, but we're all three very heavily invested in the community here. Todd's the owner of T and R Dirt Company, Salina Engine, and American Roll Off Service. Myself, I have Magnolia Hills, KC Development, Superior Properties, and Kelly Dunn Construction. Craig Piercy with KC Development, Studio Car Washes, and JC Builders. So we have a lot going on in town, and we got a lot to, lot to work for here, and that's why we decided to take this project on because we felt like we were kind of running out of lots, all the houses that we like to build and is the most desirable that get sold around town, and this is the logical next place to go. Everything was all platted, pretty much ready to go. I think probably what I would really like to point out is the River Trail area that we took on several years ago. We put 42 lots in roughly a year and a half ago. We've sold all of them but 12. So that's, that's quite a few lots. And we, I kind of, that's kind of what pushed us towards this project was, we're going to be out of lots in a year for the 160 to $300,000 range homes. And that really kind of drove us to, to get this area because 90% of the area that we're requesting is, is the type of housing that we can build in that 160 to 275 range. The covenants, you can go down to 1,200 square foot, I believe, up to 1,600 square foot. And that's where we're at at River Trail, and I think that's why it's been successful because there's big demand for those types of houses here. I think when we talk about a lot of these different lots around town that we've had since, for 10 years, or 11 years, or 12 years, or whatever, Highland Meadows, River Run, Grand Prairie, the absorption rate is a lot smaller than what we're proposing. 400,000-plus houses just don't go up as much as 160 to $300,000 houses. I mean, that's kind of the niche for Salina of what people want to see here, and that's what sells here. So that's what we're shooting for. And another thing is that I, I just, I want to bring up is the housing that we're proposing here too, we, we, you know, we'll employ a lot of people. There's probably, I'm estimating $50 million where the houses will go up in this area in the next 10 years, or eight, eight to 10 years, I think it'll probably take to do that. There's a lot of financial impact for, for building materials, and it just trickles down all over town for what this would create. Another thing I'd like to say is, if you want to build a house in, in South High School District right now, there's 12 lots left. That's it. I mean, once we got those done, Todd Welsh, I think Scott Airey going, and I think there's another one coming up, the Wheatland Edition. That might have some lots where you can get in that area, but those are all in Central District. So if you want a brand-new house, South Salina under 300, we got 12 lots left. So I think there's a pretty high demand for that right now. I did a little, did a little research myself, and right now, as of today at noon, there were 80 houses on the market in Salina. And that's off the MLAS list. The realtors tell me that a healthy real estate market in our community, we should have between 130 and 150 to make it even between the buyers and the sellers. Right now, it's pretty much a seller's market because we have hardly any inventory. And a lot of it is, I think, if we had newer houses, people would move up. Me and Craig spoke a little bit, a lot of the, some of the houses, some of the people that are buying the new houses in these areas right now, I'd say 50% are coming from out of town, and 50% are moving up, but there's just, doesn't seem to be very much inventory right now. But I think that's about all. I had, Dean, covered a lot of great topics, and I'd be glad to take any questions if you have any.
Would you like to say something nice about Salina Central before you walk outside?
Oh, no, no, Salina Central's great. I'm just saying, we've got a lot of lots in the Salina Central District, and a lot of stuff that's been approved is in, in this line district, or central district. But I think all the schools are great. I just was saying, if you want that, that's what we have available.
We'll see who's watching live. They'll be outside.
Hope it's not that big baseball crew.
Right. I don't have any questions.
Basically, thank you for, for answering questions. I assume that you completed some sort of a market analysis or pro forma or business plan or something that you've submitted to staff before we make this decision?
Yes. Well, we've submitted the application with, with all that information in it.
Okay, oh, the, this one here, the, the hand, okay. I just wanted to make sure. And I think that earlier you referenced price points up to 270, 275,000, and I just wanted to point out that here was mentioned 250,000. Not a big deal, but it's just.
Well, just, I mean, it's, it's what people want. I mean, you can, I mean, we're just available to do, do it to those price points. I mean, there's just a lot of variables in, in house building, as there is with, you know, buying a car and anything else. You know, you can buy a $200,000 house, and you can buil, build the same house and put different stuff in, and it's 250. So there's just a lot of, a lot of variation there.
Right, right, I understand that. And, and you also, you know, you mentioned your own build, or your own company, Kelly Dunn Construction, and I'm sure that your hope is that you're going to be able to, to build some of the houses.
Sure.
In, in that development. And then I guess that kind of leads to my next question, and it's not for you, I'm going to kind of look at Greg here, because I, while I realize that we don't have any statutory conflict of interest per the Attorney General, our own ethics policy does call out an appearance of conflicts. And I just would like to get your take on that, given that I know in the past, we've had members, Commissioner Ryan recused himself because of his substantial interest in Kelly Dunn Construction.
Well, if we want to start with substantial interest, we know that from the opinion received from the Ethics Commission, that in this case, an application by the separate entity, the Stone Lake Development LLC, does not relate to the substantial interest that at least Commissioner Ryan did have in Kelly Dunn Construction, Inc. And whether that remains the case, I'm.
And I still do have that, that conflict, but as that ruling from the Ethics Commission has explained, that ancillary companies don't apply, the statutory exception doesn't apply to those.
Right.
And my, I would certainly say for the common law side of that, that me, my wife, I think is who Commissioner Hodges is referring to, doesn't have any kind of an agreement with, with any entity on representation of, of any real estate.
For purposes of this development.
I would think not, that I don't have either statutory or a common conflict interest.
Yes, I didn't know if there was a basis upon which we thought there was potentially a common law conflict. I, that would be, I suppose, one of the key elements, is whether there was a listing agreement in place or something along that line.
I'm not, I don't believe there's any agreements of any kind. I've asked that question, and she, she's told me not. I guess Kelly's here to verify that.
No, there's nothing.
And Kelly's a businessman, I'm sure that he, he looks to who can help him the most to work with him on the S home sales, so he's got all of his options open.
So I guess that.
Does that answer the question?
I, I guess it does. So speaking to specifically to our ethics policy, which I guess would be considered the common law aspect, we're good.
Well, our, our policy anticipates three scenarios. The substantial interest, the statutory test, which we've spoken of. It contemplates the potential for a common law conflict that is, as we know, more a function of case law and Attorney General's opinions, which is different. The beauty in the substantial interest test is its objectivity. The limitations are its objectivity. The common law test is more on the subjective side, but I would think that what we were speaking of in relation to the common law test would be the critical aspect, this matter of, you know, if there were such a listing contract, I think we would have to look into that further as to whether it potentially reached that level. We then have also the third category where an individual commissioner, if you believe in your, in that, if that individual commissioner in his or her own assessment wishes to not participate on the basis of an appearance, a potential appearance, and I'm looking here for, yes, thank you, the, I'd forgotten the exact language we use to kind of, it's not necessarily a conflict, but just this matter of, of frankly, giving the individual an opportunity.
But the concerns that you had, Mayor, just to alleviate your concerns, and then also to, you know, I don't want you guys to get the wrong idea, but to help out the applicants, if their engineer had been here, I think one of the things that he may have pointed out is that it looks like this subdivision was designed that so that 3A was, might have been an original Phase Two, because there was a lot of talk about an emergency access and how that relates to our subdivision ordinance, and that generally deals with emergency acts, ingress egress. And when Phase, if you look at this, when Phase Three is actually constructed, you will not have a cul-de-sac length issue because your cul-de-sac length will actually only be that small little section between South Ohio and, I don't know, is that Crystal? Crystal Lane. So technically, from a planning and, and from a subdivision ordinance perspective, if they build 3A before, well, if they build 3A, we're, two, two, you have a violation. Phase Two, you have a violation. But Phase Three, you guys aren't required to, you got, you guys meet the subdivision organization, ordinance for emergency ingress egress unless someone here wants to say that that's, that you have a cul-de-sac length issue. Because everyone's sitting here saying that they're going to have to build, is it, anybody, I mean, you guys had a long conversation about this earlier. Are you going to require them to build something that they're not required to build? We sat back there and listened to it for the last 40 minutes.
We're saving it all for Part Two.
Huh?
We're saving it all for Part Two.
I don't know what Part Two is.
When they come back.
Okay, super. Well, I hope they will because we hear an awful lot about requiring developers and builders to do things unfairly, and I don't believe that's the case most of the time. But in this case, I don't think we should unduly make them make an emergency access on the north end of that when they're really not required to. So thank you for that. And I disagree with the commissioner that he does not have a conflict of interest.
Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move, we request, or we authorize city staff preparation of a special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phases Three, A, B, and C of the Stone Lake Edition.
Second.
He's been moved and seconded to authorize staff preparation of special assessment engineering feasibility report, excuse me, Phases Three, A, B, and C of Stone Lake Edition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one. And is there any other business before we entertain the motion to adjourn? All right. Don't.
Okay. Mayor Davis, I move. We adjourn.
Oh, seconded gratefully.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.